All right. Hello, everyone. Good evening. I would like to call this meeting of the Berlin Boylston Regional School Committee to order. Just a reminder that this meeting is being recorded. Your image and or voice may be broadcast. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this is gonna be really difficult, but the very first thing I'd like to do tonight is, I'd like us to have a moment of silence in honor of Rachel Jametsky, who is the young woman that our district lost this past month. I didn't know her, but I know there was an outpouring of love and support from this community. And it's just, it doesn't matter. It's awful to hear about the loss of a young life with so much potential. So let us just take one moment and let us all think about Rachel and her family. Thank you. All right, next up, we have public comments. So is there anyone here that would like to make a public comment? Okay, so you can just stand up? Yeah, sure. And just state your name and introduce yourself, who you are, and feel free to go ahead.
Okay, I'm Jennifer McCafferty, working in cafeteria here at Tohoto. I'm also a parent and student here at Tohoto. We're just hoping that if Woodson stays, because we're not sure where things are at the moment, that we all stay district employees. It's the most important thing to all of us. Many of us have years of longevity here and have put lots of years and energy and effort into working here. And we just want to make sure that that doesn't get lost in the transition of things.
Thank you so much for standing up. Thank you. All right, does anyone else want to speak?
I had a question.
Sure.
I saw, I just noticed tonight on my check the agenda that that one of the things being covered is the vote for our school choice. So I don't know if I could just, you know, say 30 seconds worth.
Sure. Did you want to just introduce yourself for everybody?
Sure. You guys okay if I sit?
Sure, yeah, of course. Just say your name and then you can go ahead.
Jason Carroll.
Hi, Jason.
Probably half the people who know me.
Yep.
And know my kids' story. So. I only have one little one who's now fully grown. And she did all of her growing through this school system, Berlin Memorial. Actually, people. So I'm a proud parent of a kid who is in this district. And I chose multiple times to have her in this district through school choice. So she, we never lived in Berlin or Boylston. I lived up in town lines for a while and watched the bus circle in my neighborhood, but not ELA to put her on the bus. So that was like, you know, that little negative was the only, about the only negative I've had through. And it's nothing that anybody can do to change that. So we've been happy sending our kid to Berlin Memorial, not Tohoto, for the last two years. So I just wanted to make it clear to the people who were voting that there are many people like me. I'm one of at least five parents with a kid in the seventh grade in Clinton that sends it to here. At least at the beginning of this school year, there were at least five that I know of that come in from Clinton. And at least three of them, including my daughter, are on highest honors every semester, every quarter. And as Carol and Lisa know, I chose at the beginning of this year to keep my kid here instead of sending him to Amazon. Because I, you know, I really like Carol and Lisa and everything that this school system has to offer. So my hope is that other parents like me and my kid have the option going forward to send their kid here versus Clinton. You know, not the local public school. So I'm very appreciative and hope that you guys consider that as an option going forward, if not this coming year after that.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Does anyone else have a comment they would like to make? Okay, we will move on to communications. Does anyone have any communications they wanted to share, adjusted? Yes?
April 7, I attended the Master Plan Implementation Committee in Boylston. As you passed on to me and then the select one appointed me. The plan is to meet quarterly and they gave us the plan to review and to come back. So I was thinking of something the subcommittee on student success could do. And then if there's any concerns, certainly, you know, we're concerned about more housing and room in those schools. But they will report more. It was more of an informational.
That's great. Yeah, I think that's a great spot for that to sit. Thanks so much. Anyone else with communications? All right, next up is consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second, Lori and Julie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And aye as well. Any post? That motion passes. All right, first up, my report. So it's been a pretty busy month, but I don't really have anything to report tonight. The only thing is that, just a reminder that we have town meeting in both towns. I believe it is the night before our next school committee meeting. So we will not meet again before that. It is, is it May 7 in both towns? Yeah, it's 6. It's a May 6? Monday, May 6? It's a Monday. Yep, August 19. So it's Monday, May 6th. So I would urge anyone listening to go. I know the committee, we usually go to our towns. We'll see, I might stop in Berlin and try to make an appearance in both towns. But it's gonna be really important, especially in Berlin, for the Berlin residents to vote in favor of the school budget. Because I believe the school budget differs from the town budget in Berlin and Boylston. We came to an agreement. So the budget matches what the Fincom mandate recommended in Boylston. So it's gonna be really important for parents to go and support the schools and the budget. All right, and that was it for me. Okay, Emerson, do you want to give a quick update? Okay, great, thanks.
So it's finally the fourth quarter, which we all know, which is the busiest, but also the most exciting time for students, I would say. This week is our last spirit week. We have rally for the high schoolers, which really marks the beginning of all of the new year activities that are gonna come. Our spring sports officially began yesterday. The girls lacrosse and the varsity softball have amazing games and won against little sex and Clinton. The record for both the boys varsity baseball and the girls lacrosse is 1-1. And the varsity softball is 2-0, which is quite strong. Track is having their first track meet right now, actually, I think, which stadium that are coming from to talk to you all later. For clubs, everyone's planning what the end of our year is gonna look like, whether that's submitting the final draft of the yearbook, which we're doing tomorrow. Or the final touches for prom and scheduling the last cafe for cause. The prom tickets have been getting sold at lunches, which are getting very fast, which is May 17 at the Chocodyne. And I feel like all the classes are trying to sneak in a little last fundraiser to raise all the money for next year. The class of 2024 just had the volleyball tournament and the class of 2026 had a Chipotle fundraiser over the weekend. And lastly, I would say all the seniors are getting in their last college acceptances and weighing their options to see where they'll end up next year. And for middle school, the sixth and seventh grade just finished their ELA MCAS today. And the eighth grade is doing that tomorrow and the next day. We're excited to see what the last quarter molds for everybody. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Emerson. Okay, so next we have Nancy, who is not here tonight. So I believe there is someone from Woodson that's going to present the bid that we are voting on tonight. So why don't we do that now? So it's the Woodsons bid that we're gonna be voting on. So Carol, if you wanna?
Yeah, sure. Yep, I have with me right now Alyssa Charles, the district manager for Woodson. And she's gonna answer any questions that you might have. I have some information myself. You have a paper that was submitted regarding, there's a summary of proposal on it from the business office. That includes other information in the report, but I think you'll find information that's valuable in terms of making a decision tonight for a vote. But Alyssa, do you wanna come up, do you wanna move over? Come sit here, so. We had a chance to talk today with Rob, who could not be with us this evening. He had another emergency. But we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
And if it's okay with you, if there are any questions, I'm gonna just put Christine Catterton, who I spoke with you all before, from our business office on the line, in case there's any questions that I can't answer. So if you want to present anything tonight, I believe that you all received the bid materials. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer questions.
I was curious. They said that you were going to, that profits were posted. And I was, earlier we were trying to post profits. I'm curious, is that just from state funds from Massachusetts and that's our profits? Plus like doubles and valid card items, or I just didn't understand that.
Sure, so the way that revenue works is after expenses, anything additional stays with the school district. So we have a certain guarantee. And then beyond that, anything additional that's earned stays in the food service revolving account. Those ones have to be used for the food service program, but they stay with the school district. Does that answer your question?
So then it's a state fund.
Yeah, yeah. Do you want to talk about that as the example, or we can talk about the?
Sure. Yep, so this school year, for the past few years, the state has been giving supply chain assistance to every school district, more or less in the state. And so this year, there was an additional $30,000 that was deposited to the food service program in February. And that, again, it goes into the food service fund. It belongs to the school district and it's used for any expenses related to the program.
The other piece, I know that we have our folks here from the Cafeteria Services who asked a question about keeping our staff here intact.
Yeah, and our current, our bid does propose that you all stay employees of the school district. And that's, you know, for the term of the contract.
Where can we see that in the bid? Because I was looking through some of the proposals in there. I know the letter that we received through email says that. But then one of the flyers or the proposals, it was a whole section on welcoming the BBRSD employees into our family. And the way, you know, as an idea or a gesture, that sounds nice, but the way it read, is it read like an onboarding system to be in.
Christine, do you know exactly where in the?
I was trying to grab it, but it's technically.
It's like really. Hi.
All right, you were on mute.
Oh, I apologize. Oh, I apologize. So the committee is wondering where in the bid it states that the employees will remain school district employees.
That was stipulated in the RFP.
I did, I remember reading.
Yeah, it was in the RFP, I know that. Is it in the bid and will it be in the contract?
In our Schedule E, we'll see that these expense for the hourly team members are, is associated with the SFA.
So pretty much everything is gonna stay the same as it is right now.
In terms of operational structure, yes.
Well, what would change?
When the team members would remain SFA, team members or our manager would remain a victim's manager. So there's no operational change.
What's SSA again?
SFA, that's School Food Authority.
Oh, SFA, yeah.
Under the school program. But would anything else change? Nothing, just as everything's outlined in the bid, we've kept it, you know, very consistent with how things have been the past few months that we've been here.
The elementary schools haven't seen the dramatic change that high school has seen. Would that be changing?
So yeah, so as, you know, we work, you know, more and more with the district, as Rob becomes able to, you know, work more and more with each school, then absolutely you'll start to see those changes implemented at each school. It just takes a little bit of time, which is why we're glad we're hopefully able to hopefully continue this partnership with the school district. So that way, we can continue to make those changes. Because we do find it does take a little bit of time to kind of get everything in place the way that we'd like to see it.
And is there gonna be like a formal feedback process? From kids?
Yeah, so we do have, Woodson annually does surveys twice a year. So we do have Rob, our food service director, is working to get that survey ready. It will open the day we return from February break. And?
April 3.
Yes, April 3. I'm not pushing us back. So it's the day we return from April break. And that's open to parents, to students. Anyone who's interested in filling out that survey can complete it with the school that they're at and any comments that they have. And we can review all of that feedback. And we do it in October and then again in April, so it'll be twice.
We've put together a survey in February, I think early on in the transition. But we only got 13 respondents back to that, so it really wasn't enough to get.
It went voting show.
It went out in newsletters, in newsletters, yeah. So it was early on.
Was it right before vacation?
I thought it was right, it was the beginning of February. So with that, then they'll do another one now in April, which will really guide us. I think it's important to note that even though we have not had a first read of this, and it's a lot of material to digest, that if we don't vote tonight, we're gonna lose the opportunity to bid on Woodsons. They were the only ones who did submit a bid to us. So that's important to know. It doesn't have to do with Woodson's timeframe so much with DESI timeframe. And DESI's, they changed their timeframe.
I thought we had a 60-day window from the date of that letter, which I think was the, was it the 18th? I think that's 60 days. This bid is good for 60 days or something like that.
So the bid from Woodsons stays good, however DESI needs the executed contract by their deadline.
Oh, what's their deadline?
May 3.
It's valid for 60 days.
Right.
So we have a possible meeting on the 23rd. We could, if we need more time to look at it, we can do that.
Yeah, if you have a meeting, I was gonna talk about that in my report, Mike. I didn't know what everyone wanted to do, so.
That is, is that over?
That's our as needed meeting.
That's the as needed, but I would've wanted to talk about that with everyone when I get to my report. So that's a consideration. The original date was in April. April 12 to send the draft decision back to DESI. They've just moved their date. So we're trying to monitor, it's not them, it's meeting DESI deadlines to make sure we get this in at the, in the right timeframe. So that's, I just want you to be aware of that too, so. But I think that's why Alyssa will help to answer questions of this, to make a informed decision.
Can I ask a question on the bidding process up to, I know you still have the one one. Submitted a bid. What was the process up to that?
I have a follow-up question along with Julie's question there. So how many separate people did you interview to become the district food service director outside of the Woodsons bid?
To my knowledge, we didn't do any interviews for an individual person at this time.
So you didn't even advertise for it?
I think she did.
Did you advertise for it?
I thought she did.
Yeah, that was back in.
Well, Nancy would have been, Nancy should be here to answer these questions. Where is Nancy? I'm sorry. She's on leave. I wasn't aware. Did that communication go into the committee? Was it bereavement? She's on bereavement leave right now, so she'll be back by the 23rd?
I can't answer that at this time.
Yeah. Okay, Nancy's on bereavement leave right now.
She's on leave right now.
Is it bereavement leave or is she?
Just leave.
Okay, because she, I know she spearheaded this whole situation.
And I would speak to it for, to a little bit the way the process works. Generally, I know Nancy, you know, enacted it on behalf of the district. Generally, and what Nancy did was the procedure where she uses the DESI template for the RFP, which is required for food service providers. It was posted publicly so that any interested bidders were able to come. There was a tour of the food service facility, which I believe was required, required attendance for, in order to place a bid, you had to come to the tour, which is pretty standard. Woodsons came, as did one other company. And it was all sort of set up in the schedule in the RFP with the timeframe for the first meeting, when bids were due, et cetera. And we have a copy of the RFP here, if anyone would like to take a look. And then of the two companies, Woodsons and the one other who were present on the bid tour, Woodsons was the only one that submitted a bid.
And then we didn't interview for it, because I remember last time we talked about this in December. The committee wanted you to interview as well as do RFPs. I couldn't be mistaken, but I'm almost positive we put that in our motion when we voted on it.
She did post it, but I think, I gotta think that one more time.
It was posted for, it was posted before we hired Woodsons. She posted it like back in November.
Right, that was posted in the fall.
I don't know that a job description was posted to hire outside at this time for next year.
Yeah, we might need to check the minutes, because it might have been included in the motion that we voted on, that we wanted to see that.
What meaning was that was, that was December meaning?
I could, I know we discussed it. I don't know if it actually went in the vote or not, but I know we discussed it and you said you would.
Okay, I don't recall that, but I have to go back to.
All right, so do you want to wait until April 23 to vote? I mean, I think if we do a meeting on April 23, it'll be a Zoom meeting. Just gonna go ahead and say that right now.
I have some other questions too, that I don't know if you guys can answer, or if Nancy would be better to answer them when she comes back. You have, in that letter here, you have the increased lunch meals that were served from January to March. And it shows pretty decent increases there.
Yeah.
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 I'm curious if that is because of Woodsons? Or is that because year to year with the state's free lunch program, inflation, families maybe trying to save on groceries? Just send them through? I don't see the September to October numbers, which might help answer that question.
I'd say the food is 100%.
Well, that's my, that's my next question.
Yeah, I don't know. I can see that unfortunately Rob, our food service director, had an emergency and couldn't be here tonight. I know he, you know, we were just sort of looking at since we've been here. So since Woodson, Woodson's has been here, that's sort of what we're looking at.
That's understandable. I'm just curious, is that because of Woodsons or is it because of the economy? I'm sorry, say that again.
Oh, yes. And so, yeah, Christine, we're looking at a supplemental document that Rob created. But Christine was explaining that projected increases that are indicated as well are comparing similar Woodsons districts that have, we're benchmarking against similar districts that have a comparable size.
So Carol, if you can find that information for the next meeting. And then I guess it would be nice, you said you sent the surveys out. It sounds like a lot of people may not have seen that. I'm just curious, Julie, you said the food is 100% better, but are the kids taking it 100% better? Or I hear conflicting reports from people that we talked to. There's a lot of extra food prep, there's a lot of extra food waste. What is the food waste situation with this versus a different program that we might have had before? Those are concerns that I have.
Yeah, I can't answer the food waste.
Yeah, I know.
But I can definitely, the quality is better.
I mean, I hear you. I tend to believe that.
Which probably relates to money.
I tend to believe you on that, but I'm curious about that waste. We don't have that information here, so we don't know. I don't know if they know or they can tell us, but.
I could say that in general, you know, a big part of Woodsons efforts and philosophy is, you know, we try to introduce a lot of new foods. So things that maybe are plant-based or meatless, you know, sort of the greener initiatives as well as just sort of things that are a little bit different, introduce students to new foods. And so sometimes when we try one of those new items, we don't know exactly how many to make. So the first go around, there could be a little extra. We also, but you know, like the subsequent times that meal is served, we sort of are able to correct for it. Similarly, in general, we like to make sure that the first student and the last student have the same choices. So we never like to see that the last student to come through the line at the last lunch only had the choice of cheeseburger or salad and not all the other array of options. And that's very important to Woodsons as a whole. We believe that every student got the same choices. And so sometimes it does end up with a little extra waste, especially on days where maybe pasta's the main entree. And it was gonna be, you know, it was really popular last time, and it usually is. And so we cut back on some other things, but maybe for whatever reason, it was too much. And so there's a little bit of extra. Or we didn't realize that the special of the day was gonna be so popular and we end up with a little bit extra, you know, extra cheeseburgers or pizza that day. So it's sort of a learning curve for us as we come in and see what are the students' tastes? What do they like? What do we need to create, what do we need to, you know, push up the numbers on and what do we need to cut back? So it's definitely a learning process. You know, that being said, we do have a lot of green initiatives as well. We work with a lot of school districts on composting, plastic recycling and things like that as well, to try to reduce that carbon footprint.
Will you be doing that here next year?
Absolutely. Yeah, and we can do any, you know, any of the programs outlined in the bid, which include like our, the next trax program, which is like a, like a thing, plastic recycling, as well as composting, or things that we can certainly work with our team and with the school committee and school districts on implementing, absolutely.
Does food waste ever get donated to people who have no food?
Usually, no. It's a little bit of a liability for the school district, because the school district owns the food. So it's sort of what's gonna happen between when it's sort of picked up and where it gets where it's going. It can be a bit of a food safety issue.
That's the same for restaurants, too.
Yeah, you can't, you can't, yeah, there's laws against, yeah, you can only donate, I think, for food. Pantries will only take.
They don't want to come to the shops?
Yeah. It is. And as Christine mentioned, there's a lot of regulations, board health regulations. And also some of the food we use is USDA commodities, which have their own regulations for the serve subsidized by the company.
Subsidized, yep, 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 yep. It's unfortunate.
Yeah, we all hate to see if we really do waste it, the worst.
So as you, as you go on and get more familiar with the kids, that cuts down? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, that's definitely the hope.
The hope or that it happens? Like, we're in April now, so has that happened here?
So again, right, it's every time we introduce a new item, we don't know how it's gonna go, but we like to continue to introduce new things.
Right.
You know, to keep the kids' mouths fresh, to give them new options.
So like from the start of this program in January to now, has that cut down at all?
I don't know. I don't have that in question. I don't know. How do we measure the food waste? We'd have to, we're not, that's, I think that's, that's not something, like, you're not gonna be able to answer that. You're not in the cafeteria. The only people that might be able to answer that is people serving food, but they have to be paying attention to what gets thrown away. So I mean, what you could do, Carol, is if you're.
They're here.
Well, if you're paying attention to what's thrown away, so.
I mean, we have a panel.
So why don't we start? So can you guys, not all of us. All right, Tammy, Tammy, are you able to answer Mike's question?
Um, yes.
Do, I don't want to put you on the spot. Well, like any, any.
Any, so she's in the kitchen, she does all the overseeing of food going out. And then she also sees what stays in the kitchen.
I have a notebook and I should remember every.
Okay, so do you want to speak? Could you speak to that?
So is it more or less since we started doing this?
The food waste.
Food waste. It depends on if it's something new to the kids. We tried an appetizer sample, for example. And I never thought it was gonna go like it did. We ran out.
It was, um.
It was crazy. Um, but that day we had a lot of burgers left that they eat every day and a lot of chicken patties that they eat every day. So the next time you prepare for samper and you don't make as many of the other things. But unfortunately, we do have food waste. But like I said, we often, Rob likes to try the same thing twice, even if it doesn't sell. Because the second time, it's new the first time, so the second time, they have. Because the second time, it's new the first time, so the second time, they have, you know, they have a better idea of what they're being served. So it does fluctuate, but. And we're getting better on our numbers. We're not throwing away as much chicken patties and burgers as we were in the beginning.
So that's good. So that seems like, yeah, it's trending in the right direction, but yeah, you started in January. It hasn't even been four months yet, it's been three months. And we had a break in there.
And I can say that, you know, just as, like, I always speak to Tom Honto personally, and Renee and Rich and I are at lunches, you know, almost every day. And we, you know, talk to the, the students. The students definitely are feeling like they're compared to the beginning of the year. So I can say from the beginning of the year till now, the kids absolutely feel as though they're proportioned. They really enjoy the meals. And, you know, I don't want you to speak, but you all seem to be in a good place right now. Better than you were at the beginning of the year. So, like, so I make sure, I can be talking to them and the students all of the time. So that communication is constantly happening. We are constantly asking the kids, what do you think of this, what do you think of that? Or do you, are, are you feeling full? You, what do you wish you had more? And I have noticed that kids are absolutely eating more than these vegetables.
I understand, yes.
A hundred, like, a hundred percent, they're eating, like, the cut-up cucumbers one day isn't like the fresh strawberries, those were like a lot of. Like, you know, so, I mean, those are all incidental reports, but it's like every day. We are seeing this every day, so.
And we do, I think what we run out of is salads more than anything, to my brain, like, so.
We're still trying to grasp on.
Right, like, it's really, are wanting salads, you know, because they're big and they have protein to them. And that was really nice. I think in the beginning, it was a big shift for everybody and that was, you know, difficult for the kids too. There were certain things that they didn't like and they missed the old, but I think it's kind of been a good combination in the fact that they've all been here. These are, this is their, this is their safe now, like, their teachers change, but you guys have been their safe people. And so that made, they were worried about that too. The fact that they keep seeing you has been really huge, you know, in making them feel good.
Okay, so do you guys want to vote on this now? Or do you want to wait until April twenty-third and have a meeting then to do a vote on this?
Has Nancy reviewed? Like, who reviewed this?
She did review it in preparation of the meeting tonight. I did have questions for the school committee at this time now. As a body, I'm hearing a couple of things. I heard my admission of the survey, a survey going out again. I was unclear about, I didn't quite catch the last part of that. Other than Whitsons survey going out in April, is there another survey that you want? I missed the last part.
You mentioned some February survey.
Yeah, I missed the last part, Michael, what you said about the survey, that's all I'm.
It was what Jess had mentioned about, you know, I was curious just how parents, how kids are liking it, how the staff are liking it. Is there food waste, not food waste? Is it more or less to prepare? Just, you know, overall, how is it going? And then we have the numbers for this year. But I'd be curious to see if that's because of Whitsons or is it maybe just a trend this year? Because of the economy?
That's a September to December, you're asking about participation. So the survey, is, is the school committee comfortable with the survey that will go out April from Whitsons? Or did you want us to create another one in addition to?
No, just one, nobody's gonna answer two. Just do one. So if Whitsons is doing one, that's great, now when is that going out?
But my, the information I'm asking for, Carol, doesn't necessarily need to come from a survey, at least not all of it, it doesn't need to come from a survey, it's just data.
So the survey's April twenty-second and includes a vote for two full weeks.
Yeah, so that's not gonna help us further. We're not gonna get that information for our April twenty-third vote. So, yeah, I mean, Carol, Mike, you're making some good points. It'd be great to have this data before we vote on this.
I'm also curious why nobody was interviewed for the in-house program we discussed.
Yeah, I was just trying to look back, but I'll have to look back on that again, Mike. I will tell you that this is just the way it is. We would have to go out if Whitsons incoming, we would post for a director. But to your point about whether we're supposed to go out simultaneously, I'd have to go back and look if that was done and I'm unaware of that.
I don't know if we dictated a time when it was supposed to go out, but just in the normal course of business, so that you can get it done, I guess, would be the timeline.
The, the posting for a director?
Yeah, I believe we talked about, you know, this was a stopgap measure for this year. Those are the issues that we had in November and December. We were curious, number one, about the employees, staying employees. And then two, about whether this was the route to go based on what improvements have been made. Measure those improvements by the users, what's their experience with it? Financially, what's the experience with it? Are we doing better, are we doing worse? You know, all those questions that we would think would just be normal questions to evaluate such a big decision like this just aren't here.
How long, is, is this bid for one year or for three years?
There is for one year.
For one year.
Okay. And then renew for three more, right?
It might be the best option, we just don't have the information. We're just doing this because you say, oh, yeah, they're cool, we like them, go for it, please vote for it. We don't have any data that says that it's better.
Well, we talked to people in the community, we talked about kids.
You talk to thirteen and fourteen-year-olds, is it actually better?
Yeah, they're gonna tell you, yes.
Okay. Well, then that would be one, that would be one, that would be one set of data that we, we jacked.
So do you think it matters if teenagers don't want their fears, think? So Julie, Laurie, Jess, do you guys feel that we have enough information to vote tonight or do you want to wait?
I feel like we have enough information.
Okay, Laurie, what do you think?
I mean, I, I love the real food, I just don't, I feel like I'm making a decision based on what I think and not, I don't really know what.
Yeah, Mike, as much as I hate to agree with you, I, I really don't want a meeting.
I mean, I've got a share and a cop.
With your cop, I was just saying, yeah.
This is gonna be the only time tonight.
Is there a way, Jess, what do you think, sorry? Is there a way that we could shorten the window of that? Like, have it go out tomorrow and close by Friday, because we're finishing?
So the, the survey? Yeah, it's unfortunately not, because it's for, Whitsons does it for all school districts, so it's really simultaneously company-wide for every district that we're in.
I do have one final question as well. The eight thousand guaranteed surplus? Can you explain how that works? Because you say, you know, so guaranteed surplus of eight grand, you give some numbers about what you project is gonna happen. And then you say you project by the end of the year, we're gonna be in a thirty thousand dollar surplus. So where does that twenty-two thousand go to? Should we not have a higher than eight thousand benchmark? How, how does that all work?
And Christine, I'll let you speak to that, did you hear the question?
Yeah, so the question was about the eight thousand dollar guarantee versus the projections for the full year. I believe the eight thousand dollars was what was stipulated in the RFP. Right, so eight thousand dollars was kind of what was stipulated by.
So it says here, it says Whitsons submitted their bid with a guarantee of a surplus of eight thousand next year.
Oh, okay, you're looking at Nancy's notes.
I don't know who they came from, we got an email, yeah, it's Nancy.
Yeah, it says Nancy on top.
Yeah, so that, so that's for this current school year and that thirty thousand dollar.
No, that's for next, that's for next year. It says Whitsons submitted their bid with a guarantee of a surplus of eight thousand in this year, twenty-five, that's next year, right?
Yep. And then where are you seeing the thirty thousand?
Uh, yeah, so then it says, well, she says she reviewed the P and L for the last few months. She goes on to say, projecting thirty-one thousand, three hundred dollar profit from March to the end of the school year.
Right, so the, so the first line that you were reading, the bid with the guarantee of the surplus for eight thousand, is for FY twenty-five, correct? That second paragraph that Nancy included is a prediction for the end of this school year? And that thirty thou, one thousand includes that supply chain fund that I mentioned earlier, that was just around, right around thirty thousand dollars and change.
So those won't be here next year?
We don't know, that's determined by the state government.
Okay. It wasn't very clear from this. I wish we could see an answer piece.
If you don't mind, because I, just, could we allow, if they have anything else to add or to say? Because this, I think, would impact them. Would you, would that be appropriate just to?
Sure.
Because I think they have, they have information.
Yep, sure. Did you guys have anything you wanted to add or say?
Well, I know one of the reasons why our numbers are up is kids love hamburgers and chicken patties and cheeseburgers and fries that we get every single day. So, and our numbers have been up since the kids have got pretty much.
Oh, yeah.
Our numbers went way up, we've not stopped it. But.
Different kinds, I guess, we eat potato fries. Sometimes.
We have fried potatoes. There's a variety of different.
The hot sandwiches, oh, come on, fries. Sometimes they get a sandwich, just fries and fries. You're still getting, I guess, you're getting a burger.
The main lunch is a sandwich, and I get fries, and I'll go, I'll have a cheeseburger.
So the variety options are better. I'm sure, does that make some more work for you?
But they're still not making the best choices sometimes. Like, it's still a bar, some kids who get, yeah.
But that's something you can control.
No, I know, but I mean, we're not gonna ask burgers every day, so they wouldn't be forced to take some out. They are taking fruit too, but.
The hot spots have been great. They do love all the fruits and vegetables that they can get. And salads, we do salads as a meal, but we also do side salads within the hot spot. Not every day, they love the Caesar salad, you can't put no health there. But I think the numbers, I mean, they are up a little bit more, but I think they've been up since the kids have been getting pretty much. I mean, our numbers have gone up since that.
Free lunch was last year.
Definitely, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So then these, these, the comparisons from last, last year, right?
Last February.
That's correct.
Last March. It's a lot more work than it used to be. I work running, it's a little bit more. There's, that's one of my concerns, is just that then we don't have time for breaks some days, which is not, we don't probably, or great.
Yeah, what do you mean you don't have time for breaks?
And we're just scrambling to get a great thing done. So that can be an issue.
We have a lot of components, maybe the taco, you know, so the, the, a lot of components.
So do you need another person? Sorry.
We have a timetable table and we have a six feet of floor table, so it's.
Do you have any position now? Is everyone open or?
All right, all right, let's get back on track. So Carol wants to share one thing and then, all right, Jess, how do you feel? Do you want to wait until April twenty-third to vote? Or do you want to vote now?
I mean, you don't have to make.
To the decision, we're May third, we don't have to make a vote tonight. I mean, I think I'm a little unagreed because Nancy's here, I mean, she did review it and I guess she approved it from her end, is that a conclusion of her review? Nancy?
She was comfortable presenting, you know, what, what, what you have in front of you tonight as far as making the recommendation. I did just go back to the December third meeting. There was an approval of, this is the minutes, approval of Whitsons Food Service Management Company of vote. The motion was made by Mrs. Hart and seconded by Mrs. Lee. Mr. Totten made amended motion, seconded by Mrs. Lee to ensure current staff remained, sorry, employed with the same pay and benefits and that the school committee will be consulted before making a decision for next year. Six, six to four amended motion passes. So that was a discussion, there was nothing about going out again for an individual.
So it wasn't in the motion, Carol, I distinctly remember Nancy sitting here and saying, yes, they would advertise for the position and compare what would be the best interest of the school.
I also feel there was some discussion around, like, the, the food distributor was, you know, then that would add that other element to the quality of food we get. Much more than what we had before.
Definitely was part of the conversation, yeah.
Also, some of it, at the, at the end of the day, some of it has to be the school's decision and it. So DESI, we need to approve this bid, right? It's a DESI rule, that the school committee approves the bid, you know, when you have an outside company. But it's not necessarily our decision to decide if the district keeps it, the director of food services in-house or out of house. That, I think, is a Carol slash Nancy, or Carol, you know, decision.
But I think we did, in all due respect for the committee, did agree to have a consult, consultation with the school committee.
You did, yes, we said we would talk about it, so we're talking about it. So, I mean, I kind of feel like it would be.
It includes employees who are paid by the district through a budget that this committee approves. So as far as I'm concerned, it is our decision.
Well, yeah, if we decide that, if the cost is different. So Lisa, sorry, I haven't asked you, how do you, how, what are you thinking about this? Do you want to wait to get more information to vote or are you feeling, do you feel one way or the other? Do you like Whitsons?
I do like Whitsons. I think it's a vast improvement. I think the kids are getting healthier food. I've heard good things from the parents about that, they're happy about that.
Okay.
The contract is for a year, right?
Yeah, it is, yeah.
And then you have the option to renew. So I almost feel like we can gather all that information over the coming year, because this is just.
Over a year, yeah.
You know, and have just a better dataset to actually evaluate it from. So I'm actually comfortable with voting tonight, although I do respect that you have some good questions.
I agree, we can gather that data over the year, but can we? Will they? Because they were supposed to have something for us before we made the next decision and they don't.
What if we did this? What if we voted tonight and we made a motion, but that we only approve this bid if the district keeps staff?
Well, that's already in there.
No, that, that was for last year, that's not for this bid. I mean, I guess it's in our bid, right?
She, she definitely told us that.
I mean, again, I don't, I guess it's not black and white enough for me. Did you, all the staff will stay on as employees. If we were to take them on, that could be considered a material change, which would force you to go back out to bid.
Right, yes, that's what I already said, yeah.
And then we have to vote again, all right, all right, okay, all right. Okay, all right, that's my biggest concern is, you know.
If they're saying maybe more help, like?
We do, but we don't have where to put somebody, that's the thing, is enough space to have another person necessarily.
Well, is this Tato?
We don't honestly need to.
Okay, yeah, great.
And we could certainly work with Rob to figure out where a person could fit in. Maybe it's someone to sort of help for a few hours during the day when other people are taking their breaks, have a free of time. We could certainly work with Rob to figure that out and, you know, again, it's, as the school district staff, that's your decision. And this bid does include just the current staff, so that is something that we might have to adjust for if there is somebody added. Not in the sense that we have, you know, go back up to bid, but just that, you know, we make our decisions based off of the, the labor model that's presented to us in the labor schedule. So we're adding other people and that's just something we have to keep in mind.
What if you added a Whitsons person to do, to do the dishes or to do whatever?
So I think we.
Would we have to change the bid for that?
Yes, because we include all the labor for anyone, yes.
Gotcha, gotcha, so at this point, this is kind of the bid at hand.
I, I would prefer that, I mean, I think that in line with everything we're doing here, that would keep that.
You'd like to have it, if you hire someone, you'd like to keep it in this, totally, okay.
That means it would be consistent.
I don't think I have any problems with the bid as it stands right now. It's just not having the information that I thought we would have to make this decision is kind of annoying.
So I have two things. Number one is, one of the reasons we're really adamant about keeping the good people that work for us is that they have pensions and, you know, they, they, their time served and to go over to another company, they would lose all of that. So I think that's what's really important to the committees. There are a lot of them are parents over there, or they were parents, or they're people in the community and so it's important to, I think that's just so important in a community school. My concern with when we vote is if we come back a year from now, we gonna get another say in this to make sure that we can advocate one way or the other? Do you know, like, right now, we're involved and I'm just worried, I, I'm really worried about this piece right here. I just think that it's important, one of the reasons that people stay in these schools is because of the community, because of the feeling of home. And we obviously can't provide what Whitsons can provide. So it's wonderful that you can come in, but I feel like it has to be a mix of the two. Or it shouldn't be just.
I, I, what I, if disclosed to Laurie, what I would suggest is that Whitsons comes back again and we put together a plan with the school committee of what you would want to happen in a more formal way. To Mike's point, whether that, I mean, if that discussion happened, I have to tell you, it's not anything in the minutes. I don't recall that comment, it isn't that it didn't happen or was said, for example, things that were said. But I think we have to formalize what we, we do going forward and these kinds of discussions are great to have, but in the end, planning for this in a, in a more formal manner is gonna help keep everybody on track and keep clear and have all of this clean if we, if we do that for next year, a formal evaluation process, surveys and so on. I, I, and I question that too, as far as if we, if we postpone this vote until the twenty-third, I think you talked about if we're gonna have the, I mean, Megan, I just talked about not having a meeting. I, I did want to bring that up on my report, but we haven't on the twenty-third. I just want to make clear what information would matter to you to make a change in your decision. So I can try to put that together. I, I can't guarantee I will be able to put that together by the twenty-third. I, I can't guarantee I will be able to put that together by the twenty third, I will do my best, but I'm not here next week.
All right, so you know what?
I guess it's like really hard to do.
Let's, let's vote, let's vote now. And if you wanna, if you wanna vote against it, then you vote against it and we'll see if it passes, because I feel like very mixed feelings.
I think if, if the cost of motion could include that when the, the contract comes up for renewal, that we have survey data to review. That we have staff give opinions on their experience and whether they support that renewal.
Parents and kids feedback.
Yeah, parents and kids, yeah, yeah, because.
Yep.
Teachers feedback, you know, is this, they see an improvement in their classroom behavior issues because of the better food?
I agree, so maybe we put a, a mo- in the motion.
This, this, this Julie's, I really agree with.
But anything like that, I think it would.
But it's stipulated in the motion, like, that's a good idea.
But teachers would know better than you or I would.
Yeah, so this year, you, the principals can work, or Witsen's or whoever is in charge of that can work to try to gather that data for cafeteria staff.
Peanut gallery over there.
And, um, all right, all right, let's vote.
All right, so it was, so, so it, the contract begins July first and ends June thirty, so I think within the motion, we probably want that data before our last school pre meeting in June.
I will, I will add that the renewals, the renewals happen due date every year with DESI, but it's usually around the end of April.
So it'll lead, so we'll have.
It's kind of at this timeline.
It'll be this time, so we'll want data in February twenty twenty five. For our February meeting, so that we could vote in March, or our March meeting, so we can vote in April. All right? All right, so, um, could I, where, where, where am I? Okay, could I have a motion to approve the awarding of the food service company bid to Witsen's? With the stipulation that the school district and Witsen's must provide specific data to the school committee by March of twenty twenty five. Such as feedback from parents and students and teachers and.
And the committee will be involved in the decision next year.
Yeah, and staff.
Absolutely.
And the committee will be involved in the decision for the next bid. Did you get all that?
I don't think it would be a bad idea also for, if Rob or whoever's gonna, I imagine Rob will still be here as a director in this area.
Yeah.
To come in and give regular reports to the school committees before March. I think you should, should come to at least some of the meetings in the fall and.
June, June any.
That's great.
And the June, Mike can talk.
All right, Mike moved to the motion.
Oh, second.
All right, Laurie, second. Any more discussion?
Just before we do vote, just general nod of the head in the back, you're in favor or absolutely against? All right.
Glad you guys came and had your voices heard, I think that's important, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
All right. All right, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'm gonna, as well, that motion passes. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking off. Thank you, guys, feel free to. All right, and up next is going to be, we're gonna bang through these principal reports and then we'll talk about the school choice, we're gonna, everybody's gonna bring up their school choice.
You guys going here?
All the students, all right. You guys wanna go on now? You just broke, so you can go home, I'm sure you do. All right, so I'm sorry, what are your names?
Sadie and Ben.
Ben and Sadie, okay. So we have Ben and Sadie here next, we'll do that next, so they can have perfect timing. Um, and they're gonna talk about their senior field trip overnight to Great Wolf Lodge that we will be voting on. Are you ready? All right, Sadie and Ben, take it away.
Yeah. Can we print them? So I know you guys dropped these in the form that we initially sent, but I updated that a little bit more in depth, so if you guys want to pass one on. It's just a little bit more in depth of like the price distributed, um, okay, the price distributed to, between our class fund and then to students. Uh, and then also like chaperones are listed and so is the information on our stuff.
Question. Do you guys want to present or do you want us to just ask you questions?
Um.
Questions, we're ready.
Yeah.
I know, I'm on the spot, yeah, I know.
I mean, um, our field trip is gonna be, um, May twenty ninth to May thirtieth, so it's a Wednesday and a Thursday. Um, students will arrive at Great Wolf Lodge at four P M. And then they will be dismissed the next morning at ten A M. And then they will have to report right back to the school that morning, um, for graduation practice. So students will go there, sleep over, have to spend their time at Great Wolf Lodge and then come back right away. Um, we are not providing, um, busing, so, um, students will have to provide their own transportation. We're sending, we're sending out commission slips and on the commission slip is going to be stated that you will provide your own transportation to and from the event. Um, and parents will have to sign off on that, if they're not signed off on, then, um, they do not attend the field trip. Um, so, yeah, and we have three teacher chaperones lined up so far, and then we also have a parent. Um, it was kind of cloudy on how many we were gonna need for an overnight, so we have three teachers confirmed and then we can get more parents that are reporting or more teachers if necessary.
All right, great, does anyone have any questions? Sounds like fun.
I just have one.
Go ahead, Julie.
I believe you picked that.
That was all heavy.
Great spot.
Well, it's gonna be super fun.
The weather will be nice.
Yeah, exactly, definitely.
And it's all contained, it's actually, if you think about it, it's kind of a brilliant idea, because it's all contained in the building. Go ahead, sorry, I need to cut you off.
We have a lot of people, a lot of students wanting a, like, outdoor to like a beach trip. Um, and that kind of is hard to plan for May, you don't really know what the weather's gonna look like. Um, so we offered this as kind of a big compromise, we also wanted to do it overnight, so it's kind of like everything that we really wanted.
Yeah, something. Yeah, go ahead, Carol.
I, I do want to say to all of you, so, you know, I, when I was hearing about this, I was feeling a little parenty, like. But I did come to their meeting when they've been planning this out and listened to everything, and they're very responsible, I respect you all, and I know that you're gonna make good choices. You're kind of leading the way in something like this, um, for a senior trip, that's an indoor overnight kind of experience. Other, I know other districts do that, but we're kind of, I think, the first at least to do this, so, so, so I'm just ask you and nobody will lead the way with, with all good things happening and, and being responsible and respectful as you go there and representing us, the district.
How many, how many graduating members in the class? Or members?
Seventy-five.
Or maybe about eighty?
Eighty?
I think it's eight years, it's seventy-five or eighty.
Thirty-six are gone.
Yeah, so why only, not even half the class is gone?
Uh, people think they're too cool for it, honestly, I think.
Do you think more people will sign up as, uh, it gets closer to the date?
We already planned out that like, we asked, even they had, they had like two weeks to sign up to go or not. Um, and I think the main thing was that we came up with this, this idea, we had a good amount of people saying that they would want to go. And when we asked if people had other ideas, especially people who didn't want to go on this trip, they didn't really have any ideas, there were like, like, some people were saying to trip to Florida or something like that.
There's definitely plenty of opportunity to sign up and, uh, I gave people opportunity to, like, there was a form, people said no on the form, I gave them the opportunity to come talk to me and I changed a bunch of people's decisions.
Sounds like you've got some stories behind that.
There's definitely plenty of opportunity for people who want to go, thank you.
It's certainly, probably not all students go on the senior trip, right?
No.
Not for the past years, I know last year, there was a good amount of kids that didn't go, I know, I have some friends who graduated last year who didn't go on the senior trip. And it's unfortunate, I mean, we want everyone to go, but we also know that we can't please everyone, um, we haven't been able to the last two years.
We want to go to go also.
Yeah, so.
Our senior trip's usually overnight? Our senior trip's usually overnight?
No, this is, this, this is a trend laser event.
Right.
And not in this district, there are other districts do do overnights.
Yeah. So I don't know, I'm in favor of you guys going, but less than half the class is participating, you're asking for school committee approval because it's an overnight trip. You're doing private transportation. We have specific policies around private transportation, do you know what they are?
Can't drive with people, can't drive forward.
Yeah, need permission, insurance, all that.
Yeah.
I don't know, I just, less than half the class, that sucks.
So, and, and, I, um, I think it's, it is, it is a hurdle that, and it's something that students and I have been talking about over the past couple of years, is how to engage, you know, students in general, how to get them more involved with one another. And it, that is a difficult hurdle and it's one that, it's challenging. You know, how, because the dynamics of how we socialized growing up is very different from the dynamics that they're socializing. It's also the timing, to be quite honest with you, it, it is an overnight trip and at this point, it's been, it's the week before graduation and people are like, you know, my job is ramping up. You know, they, they're working, they, they can't take that much time off, you know, those, so, so that is, might be a factor in that people are working. So it's a little bit more complicated than we all might think, you know, and, and it's a challenge. And you, and you will never, as you found out, you will never please all the people all the time.
I also think that if we tried to plan something new now, that it wasn't probably as good, it'd probably less, you know, less.
You, you have put a lot of thought and, and work into putting together this trip.
And I think too, sometimes it takes you the first year, maybe the numbers aren't gonna be ninety percent, you know, but as, you know, the students know, there's a senior trip and it's an overnight, and it starts to grow, I think.
So sixteen hundred dollars of the total cost is coming from the class funds?
Yes.
The people that aren't going, they're, they're cool with that, the, the parents that helped fundraise for that, they're cool with that?
Yeah, the students are aware that a portion of it's gonna be paid through class funds and then each student who's attending will be getting exactly five dollars. Um, and that was detailed when we had to sign up.
Because we've had issues recently with fundraising and parents not being happy with the way the money was being spent. So I just want to make sure everybody knows what's going in.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, no, it's all right.
I feel like, um, the participation in fundraisers from our classes, um, extremely disappointing, that not a lot of people are wanting to, certainly people aren't volunteering to help in the fundraisers, like, maybe their parents are going to the car wash, but there's, there's never people who are trying to come up to us and volunteer during this. That's, that's unheard in our class.
Yeah, we hosted a talent show last year, then we ended up getting around, a little over a thousand dollars from, but that was basically run by me and the other officers. We had like maybe two students that are close friends that helped with like the lighting and that was it, so we tried our best. I also, um, this would be after the school year goes and after graduation and stuff like that, but I've also gone out to members who aren't attending the trip, that, um, they can plan, they're free to plan something like a beach trip, I know a lot of them aren't do that, and if you plan a beach trip in late June, early July, where the weather's nicer and you can kind of pick your day. Um, I encourage them to do that, I encourage them to let the students know and be like, this can be the trip for you guys, if you guys want to go next, or this can be like the final end of the thing after graduation, just each other one more time. Um, so I'm trying to use both sides of it, I guess.
I just, I want to say, I, I, I love the idea, because I think of senior year as like, it's like you have one foot in each world, do you know what I mean? And I think you're really celebrating the fun and I love the idea of it being an overnight, we keep talking about how we want the kids off their cell phones, engaging with each other, and this is two days. I just, I think it's a wonderful idea and I, I love how happy it is and I love your presentation, your energy and your enthusiasm, helps to really sell it too.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm ready to vote? Okay, can I please have a motion to approve the senior field trip, which is an overnight to Great Wolf Lodge?
So moved.
Sorry. Julie, was that you? Just, oh, sorry, Jess. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna, as well, that motion passes. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Great job. Be safe.
Cindy, you're up next.
Bye.
Cindy.
I was just, Rob, you're following down and then they said they have reports, would you like questions, would you like to go over the report? I'm gonna follow that, but I'm not gonna do that, you did a nice job. I do want to, um, thank you for a lot of these, share so many amazing things that are going on at B E S. Um, I'm gonna highlight a few things and I'm hoping to have more questions. Number one, the MCAS is going on in all three schools, but I'll talk about, um, E L A. So we have third grade last week, we had fifth grade the last two days, and we have fourth grade the next two days, we're hoping to finish all that before April vacation. Fingers crossed, um, we'll get through the sessions, but we do have some makeups for kids that have been out. Uh, nature's classroom fundraising is continuing on, I want to give you a heads up, the next year, I want to come to you in September to get that approved, so we can start at the beginning of the year, because it is quite substantial. We have some amazing parents, students, and the two fifth grade teachers have really spearheaded this with the parents and students to fundraise. We're not how we're made to want to be, but we're plugging along. And then I want to talk about an enrichment piece, because it kind of ties into the climate survey, which you also have the report on as well. Um, we have some amazing staff that are trying to bring on that enrichment piece, but it's not after school at this time, that's coming, I keep saying that, like, will be coming. Um, we're, uh, teachers are working on that during their lunch, recess time, kids are coming in, and I just want to say, Brandon, we started out in fourth and fifth grade and now it's gone down to second and third grade. Um, Joey Florin, did I say that right? I say that wrong. Um, and Mrs. Low, the grade teacher, has some high spirits in class for second and third grade, which we're hoping to branch upon that. And that ties into our climate survey, because I just wanted to talk about, um, one of the areas that we know at B E S we need to work on. Um, and it was seventy-four point four percent about us providing, um, interest for our students. So there was a couple, um, places on there, but this, this is an area we need to improve upon, so that was on, um, let's see, E S provides quality activities that meet my students' interest in talent such as sports clubs and music. We only hit seventy-four point four percent, that's low, so we want to work on that. So now I'm gonna open up to any questions about the finance.
Yeah, your school choice recommendations.
Oh, yes, I could have asked you, thank you. So you have that as well. Um, currently, we have two spots, one is filled, this was still before my time, when that child came in last year, there was another spot opened up. So we still have that spot, because the child has suddenly had a spot moved. So I don't, I don't think that spot went away, we didn't close it, we just didn't fill it. So if you were looking at, um, trying to report the second grade, we have three classrooms, a total of forty-seven, that is the one grade where we have a little space. And I say little, because I'm still very, um, concerned about that apartment building at the end of, that neighborhood, we do not have the nodes for that. So there is one already there that's existing, is what I consider existing, and we have space to bring someone else in there. The one child that's already there has a sibling coming in to K. Um, I thought about this long ago and I talked about it with Carol. To me, if you have a sibling there already and you have a child coming in, we have to look at that. Any questions about that? For the rest of the grades, I would not open them up, and I'm very hesitant about kindergarten, don't know our kindergarten numbers, your prediction right now?
Is the kindergarten, if you open the one for the kindergarten, Carol and I talked about this, is it guaranteed to go to that sibling? Because what if you open it up and it's a lottery and like ten people applying and the sibling doesn't get it?
Just nothing preference goes to the sibling.
Yes, oh, all right, that's what I thought.
We read that, right?
We did, Ken.
Yes, and it goes to staff.
Right.
And it's also a teacher.
Correct.
That's always two things.
Yeah, all right, that's, I'm, I'm fine with that, does anyone have anything to, all right, sorry, Cindy, did you have anything else?
We want to monitor those numbers, I, I, being a, I was a kindergarten teacher prior, we want to keep those numbers as well, we really do. This year, twenty-one in there, that's, that's, to me, is high. Um, it's an unknown right now, we have forty, um, families that have expressed interest in through the, you know, they're, they've started sending in their registration paperwork. Around this time, looking at last year, again, I wasn't here, so I had to do some research, and we were at forty, forty-five at the same time, we ended up at sixty-three, so we really have to look at that. But I do think the sibling should be allowed in. Allowed a spot.
When are, when are the apartments supposed to be opening?
They're, they're renting right now, the model is open.
I know the building is open, but I didn't know.
Yeah, we'd say June.
Pleaseing now, they're open, they're all built.
They're all, they're, it could be this year.
Julie said what was missing, I was listening, you'd say June first.
Regardless, it'll be, it'll be open for next year.
Cindy, can I ask you one question? You explained the, the one new and one existing, but I apologize, I'm a little slow. For the, for the, the grade two?
Yes.
Could you just explain that one more time?
So prior to this year, two spots were opened up. So there was a child in that spot now, and there's one that moved, so that spot's still there.
Gotcha.
I don't think it closes, I'm not sure about that.
Oh, I, yes, I know what you're saying now. Yeah, there was a kid and then they, yeah, I don't know.
Okay, thank you. Is that grade a smaller, yeah? Okay, anyone have any questions for Cindy? All right, yeah, I'm sorry.
Should we wait on the school choice until we have a?
Yeah.
Discussion on the vote? All right, the, um, the climate survey, yeah, the one you pointed out, I noticed that too. There's another one in here, um, student feels safe from verbal. There's another one in here, um, student feels safe from verbal abuse, teasing, and exclusion in school. Almost twenty percent disagree with that. That seems like a big number, especially, I know there's been some issues at that school. Last year, there there was a, uh, potential hate issue. Um, that seems like a big number for elementary school.
I agree, there are some areas in that climate survey we have to work on. Um, I did bring it to my team of teachers who've been breaking down any questions, saying, how can we grow with that? I brought it to my school council, got a lot of feedback from the parent center on that as well. There's areas we have to improve in. To me, every single one of these questions should be in the nineties. That's what my goal is, hire in the nineties, and there's something we need to work on here.
I guess that's related to the one where the students don't feel that there's a, or feels that students who demonstrate inappropriate or disruptive behavior are not held accountable. About twenty percent also feel that.
Yep, and so we talked about that, too. Some of that is from previous year, and some of that is when a student gets in trouble, it is confidential. There's a consequence for that student. I, so somebody comes to me and says, I'll use John, John did this. I can't, and then there's consequences. I cannot tell that parent what the consequence was. I can say it's been taken care of, but I don't want to detail. A lot of parents want those details.
I understand they can't go into details. Um, it doesn't sound like this question is a question about details. I mean, there's a kid with disruptive behavior, it's pretty well known. And if they're being held accountable, you would expect that disruptive behavior to calm down.
I think so.
Not necessarily. That's a typical Campbell move.
I I'm gonna be honest, I I, there are some behavioral concerns, but it's not disruptive behavior at this point there. There was, there was kids, um, that act out occasionally, but they're not destroying property or anything like that, um.
So with these behavior issues, I know, um, parts of the budget that either did get included or didn't get included were, would they have helped address that? Like, I know recess aids, right? Is this disruptive behavior recess?
There was a point four of an adjustment counselor.
Adjustment counselor, yeah.
So these made it in, or these got cut?
No, these got cut.
Yeah, so, so these things got cut, they would have helped solve disruptive behavior issues, which twenty percent of the community feels are an issue. And we're not gonna have. Okay.
All right, anything else?
Um, I saw one item was that, um, that parents didn't know what was going on in school or communication. And I, just from my perspective, like nine, first through, I'm sorry, my child, first through fifth grade. Um, different teachers would use apps, and then some don't. And so you go over a year where you're getting posts and pictures, like, oh, they did this experiment, which helps ask, like, not just, how was your day? Like, oh, you did this at school today. And then the next year, you get like one email for a month or two. Um, so I wonder if there is any thought to all using that app or some collective agreement on how we need to get there.
That was right under our school council as well, as I asked, um, for a little bit what they thought about that. And they said that the newsletter, the the information that goes out is good, where the inconsistency is, is with the teachers. That is something we started talking about with the teachers, a little hesitant making them all use the same thing. But as long as they communicate regularly is what we're going to be working on. And since this came out, I have asked them to share them with me if I wasn't receiving them, and they're are going out. Again, inconsistently, but we're gonna work on that, because I think it should be, if not, we'd leave by relief without. Just let more, we can let parents know, and the families know more.
Yeah, I mean, the that, the open house, no, it wasn't called an open house. It was a very schneller name. Yeah, was really nice, because you could see, and the kids could show off, and so it it's nice to feel that, you know, what's going on six hours. We don't want to do that, but.
Okay, anything else?
I'm just wondering, is there any way to tell from the survey data if the people who said disagree and strongly disagree for, you know, kind of consistently for a bunch of the questions, if they come from the same respondent, like, without identifying who they were? Like, I'm just wondering, is there like a small disgruntled group?
Um, to be honest, when I first started getting the results, um, there was one always in the strongly, there, in every category, there's a strongly disagree. I can't, I didn't collect emails, I collected, you know, their grades, what grade they were, they were at. We did get a little, um, some parents reached out, said they wanted a narrative, and I didn't include that in this one. Going, oh, we try that. Um, and the other thing that was brought up, which when we redo this, we'll get that a little bit more, is if they have one on one child in the school, doing that, now, they could have submitted more, but doing it separately, like, one child might, they might agree with something, and the other one may not. So we wanted to have that variance as well as the score. So we plan to do this again, and the feedback is to see if we can grow, if I was really grow.
There was one other question, sorry. Um, in the DMs report, they mentioned how many of us are going to go to nature's classroom, the participation level? Do you, do you have that for us yet?
Um, I do not have that yet, we're pretty high, um, I don't have the exact number yet, but I can get that.
Okay, John?
Nature's classroom, Karen, started MCAS testing today. We're able to do all three grades all at once, so it goes a little faster for us. First day went very well, no from those first new flames. There were others, cool.
Children ones?
I didn't have that actually.
And it happened in, I forget, it's in the summer, where it's, it's hot springs. First new flames, that's.
Yeah, exactly.
Earthquake, solar eclipse? What, earthquake, solar eclipse?
I just thought, yeah, we're just, it's the end of the world. The school choice, no, thank you. Um, given the size of our building, the size our classes are growing to now, we just can't count it as much as I have enjoyed that in the past. Um, and then in terms of the survey, um, we had some similar scores, we had some different scores. One of the ones that surprised me was, uh, I have the information I need to support my students' learning at home. Seventy-eight point two percent of careers probably agree now. Part of the problem was, it was one of the only questions where you could say, neither. And there was like ten percent of it, so that was just a little typo, I should have taken that. Um, but it was interesting, because then people say they're not sure they have the information, but then they feel they can support their kid at home, but the information, they just told me they don't have. So we got a quote more of that one. Um, we also had around those behavior things, and Cindy and I talked about those behavior numbers. Um, and we kind of had the same feeling, when something happens to your kid, you want to seek action. Um, and sometimes that's just not possible. What's nice, I think, in Berlin, because the school's so small, is that, good, parents find out. Yeah, they, they hear about it, you know, other kids look a little, oh, John got in trouble today. Um, but it's still an area of of concern. I, it's, it's one of those things where you're, you're always kind of looking to further establish trust. Um, because, and, you know, I've had this experience, you know, while I'm certainly not happy with what you're telling me, but I'll do what you said. And, uh, and that's, that's almost a blessing. Um, so, yeah, there are a couple of things that we want to further look at. Um, communication, I thought was interesting as well, people expressed some discomfort with that, which surprised me, because my teachers already do send me their.
It's because you don't update the subject line on your emails, John.
I know. Thank you, Mr. Tom, then, for embarrassing me again. Yes, occasionally I will copy my emails and forget the subject, it's usually.
No, it's everything.
It's really bad, but it does go out.
You're winning there.
I'm winning there. Uh, but that's still something, and I think part of that is, one of the nice things about circle at this is you can go back to teachers, you can say, this is what parents are saying. Whether it's, you know, their perception, or it's, you've got a problem, there's something we have to do to better clear our communication style. Um, I sense it a lot of the time, correct label or not, but I'm always amazed at, you know, what about this, what about that? It's been in three emails. Um, I think people open emails, and like, they'll read them, but I don't think they retain them sometimes.
Right.
That's me. Questions, concerns? Meaning comments about my emails?
I like your emails, John.
Thank you, Mr. Tom.
Okay, Lisa?
So, Tom, to highlights, um, so this has been a difficult one. Um, and I think that I can say that our, I'm very incredibly proud of our crisis response team um, for showing, as I wrote in the report, swift, compassionate, and effective coordination of all kinds of resources. I have to thank the community, both Cindy and John, um, allow their staff to come over and support our staff and students. And as well as a, an additional staff member, we had Clinton High School send over one of their adjustment counselors, and then Tru's Bear High, that they could support us, um, with two adjustment counselors as needed. Um, this is something that rocks the foundation of any, um, school community, continues to. And that ongoing support and ongoing understanding of what's needed for our students is continually being assessed and looked at. We did receive a lot of support from the Riverside Trauma Center, who continues to be a touch point for all of us. We've all mentioned MCAS, those are continuing at Honto. We are, we finished sixth and seventh grade, um, we are moving on to eighth grade, ELA. Uh, we, Carol and I had a, um, a nice, um, event. We both escorted one of our students, Shoyaman, to, um, the Worcester County Superintendent Scholar Award. And, and that was really spectacular to see so many young people doing such a wide range of amazing things. And really to see, um, one of our students excelling in this, um, a very proud moment for both of us, but I think for himself and for his family as well. Um, Emerson didn't want to jump, kind of highlighting our athletics and, you know, kind of upcoming events. I will identify that probably one of the happiest moments in March was the performance of Disenchanted that had happened. That was a wonderful reflection of student creativity and the commitment of Mr. Hager, Mr. Glott, to put that production forward, really involved so many wonderful young people. Hopefully, this, it's, it's a growing program, and it really is a wonderful asset to our community. Um, the student showcase, we were talking about this, and I have received a lot of just feedback, you know, informal feedback, that particularly at the middle school level, families seem to enjoy this venue, this opportunity to experience what's happening in classrooms much better than the previous open house. So that led to a conversation that we just had today, that the middle school really, it's up this format. So we're gonna really, it is wonderful opportunity to say, okay, so what have we been doing? What do we, you know, what have we tried, what's going to work better? So perhaps using a student showcase format where you're partnering with your child to come into, to do it, that model for our open house, as well as a later, you know, a work showcase. So using that information, because I think families appreciated the time to spend in the school. Um, as far as our school choice, I, when I first put out the report, I was doing the current enrollment with grades six through twelve as they were seen. Um, and I do apologize about that. So I did put in, um, for FY twenty-five, the new requested numbers. So it, and I, so I went into Power School and pulled the numbers for the current fifth grade, which would equal seventy-five, um, for our incoming sixth graders. So right now, I, just so you know that it is, when you're, at this time of year, you're concurrently working with this year's numbers and next year's numbers. So you're constantly kind of flipping in between this, what is, we're living in, and what we will be living in. And so what we will be living in is that we will have seventy-five students in sixth grade. So if we wanted to open up five spots, that would bring us to a total of eighty. That, we've seen the trend. And so in my report, you'll see a number, which is the, for the total, there'll be a total number, and then a number in parentheses that is highlighted. I don't know if it comes through in the report, but yeah, that, the parentheses highlighted number is the total number with the existing plus the school choice number added to it. So that, that's what those two numbers reflect. So I would say that there would be five spots for sixth grade, but no, um, no school choice for seven, eight, or nine. And then for tenth grade, we could have four spots, eleventh grade, five spots. Twelfth grade, we have the space, and so I put in five. For twelfth grade, it's, it's, it really isn't something I recommend. I, although there's space, having someone's school choice in as a senior.
Right.
Is something that you want to pause, um, because they're not into the long haul. So I would, I would pause on that number, um, but I wanted to present, we would have space for that. So this is what we would have space for. So my proposal would be, we have space for five in next year's sixth grade, four in next year's tenth grade, eleven, five in next year's eleventh grade. We have space in twelfth grade, but I, I actually, I would think, can't recommend school choice numbers for, for twelfth grade. It doesn't, it, it doesn't feel comfortable for me.
Would that possibly be, like, kids coming from a bad situation?
It could be, there's so many. I think the variations that you see, school choice at, um, grade twelve, I think there's a lot of variation that you would see. The reasons why a student, and we're really not, um, we're not allowed to do background, you know, and, you know. So that is why I would pause, because there's such a wide variety, whereas the natural kind of, um, enrollment would be at sixth grade, and then either at ninth or, the eighth or ninth grade. So that's when school choice numbers tend to be for students who are making a really conscientious effort to, this is where we want to be for the long haul. That's what I've seen in the past.
Just had a clarifying question. So the sixth grade numbers, I thought for some reason, the number was much higher on a projected report, maybe in the budget report.
Yes, so, so it was, so I.
But these are the actual.
These are the actual numbers. So I am giving, oh, in my report, because those are from the budget report.
Okay.
So in, in this report, all my, all these numbers are coming from our Power School, our currently enrolled students. So these are the actual numbers. So the projected sixth grade for Honto would be seventy-five. In the budget report, you would have seen the ninety-six, which I think was just a, I think.
Taken from.
It's taken from this, like, I think it was just, like, it was doubled. I think it was, that line was taken, and then.
Yeah, all those numbers doubled.
No, I think the budget includes out of district and, um.
No, she's talking about FY twenty-five.
FY twenty-five, it's, it's, it's exactly.
Out of districts.
It's just the, you know, it's enrollment projection slide in, in.
That's, that's, all right. So these numbers are what we're looking at for school choice. All right, so if you guys want to talk about school choice, go ahead, Julie.
Yeah, wait, I'm just so confused though, still. Just, I get that point.
Okay.
However, in the enrollment history, what we have in our budget report, these dates back to FY seventeen.
Right.
All the way up through FY twenty-four. Our FY twenty-four numbers are not those, those are significantly lower. So for instance, if we take.
Oh, because I'm, I'm on that.
Okay, I know you're not going to be quick.
So, so it's, um, so, okay, so.
Let me just give you an example.
Yeah.
That would be easiest. So if you guys don't have the thing, I'm probably going to roll one timeout now, but, okay, so you look at FY twenty-four.
Yeah.
Right, look at the current grade seven, eighty-three kids.
Yes.
Right, now, we look. Right, now we look at this chart, that would be projected eighth grade kids.
So it's 71 on this.
And it says 71, so.
But this, Julie.
Seventy, seventy-one, correct me if I'm wrong, 71 is the Berlin Boyleson kids. Fourteen are the existing school choice kids from other towns.
Yep.
Five or zero in that case is your requested new.
Eighty-three. So you're right. So it's the two together.
Eighty-three to eighty-five.
We have eighty-five current seventh graders, so that number.
So it is, so yes, that's 95. So if we get them on, so that's 95 for seventh.
Am I correct on that?
Yeah, yes.
Yep.
So it's ninety. It is, I see how it is now.
Eighty-three, three.
Okay.
Alright, anyone else? Mike, did you have some questions?
I have a lot of questions about school choice.
Alright, go ahead. You can start. Yeah, this is the time for school choice and all voting.
With all due respect to the parent who's here who is school choice in the district, I just don't agree with these kinds of numbers for school choice. If you look at any one of these, 11th grade, currently 14 school choice, proposed an additional five more, that's 19 school choice kids to 61 Berlin Boyleson school choice kids. That's a third of the class.
Oh, I would prefer to have, I, I would.
I know you want more kids.
No, no, no. I actually, I, I, if, if it was me, I would say zero.
All the way. Okay, good, then I agree with you. But my, my.
But I, but I was asked to, like, if I had to open it up.
So this is only space, this is not a request.
No, but it's given us money.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll get to that.
That, so that, that's, that's, sorry. That, so I'm in, I'm in, um, in between a rock and a hard place. Like, if, if only I would say no for a lot of stabilization reasons. Or, and not because, just because of, I'm unsure of how our staffing is going to happen.
Yeah. But what we, what we're voting on right now is based, my understanding is based on these numbers in this page.
Yeah, we're voting on what we open up. We don't know how many we'll actually get.
Right.
But I agree with you. So here's, I thought, my understanding though of Mike, sorry to interrupt, was that these numbers should be.
Yes, and, and I'm, I'm saying that, so, because I also know the hard place between, this is the rock, and then the hard place is that, the budget.
The money, yeah.
The money. So.
Because if we don't open up any, then the school choice revenue is the same. It's not growing, remember using it up.
Right. Exactly. So for that reason, I am saying, this is where I would be comfortable opening up spaces.
So that's your max, basically max.
Yes, that would be my.
Max, if we have to.
If we have to, that is my max where I would be.
So we're not jumping up to 90 kids in the class.
Yeah.
So my, my opinion on school choice, in this case, oh, I'm just going to use these numbers. If we were to approve this number of five additional spots, that's 19 students who are school choice students versus 61 students in that class who are Berlin Boyleson residents. That's a third of the class.
What class are you talking about?
11th grade on this page, grade 11, 61, 14, 5, 75, 80. That's a third of the class who come in 11th grade. We're not with these kids from kindergarten on, from sixth grade on. It's a third of the class that Berlin and Boyleson taxpayers are paying for. I mean, like it or not, they're paying for it in some way. I know the argument is, well, the money's already there, the teacher's already there. We have the space, we can, we can accept it. But every time you accept that, we also have, in any class, in any subject, when we see these MCAS reports come in, we have anywhere from 20 to 60% of the kids who are struggling, right? However you want to call it, they're struggling, who could use that extra attention. Every school choice student that we bring in, just the dirty facts of the way it works, that takes attention from the teachers away from the kids who are struggling, who the taxpayers are paying for. If we were getting 19, $20,000 per, if we were getting $20,000 per school choice, that can help the budget. We get five and it's going to be five forever, or whatever the number is now, is it still five?
It's five.
Yeah, it's five. The.
From state, yeah.
Right. So, I mean, you look here, you've got roughly a third of each of these graduating classes. And, and when it comes to seniors, I absolutely agree with Lisa. I mean, you know, if we were, if this were a for-profit enterprise or a college and we can go out and recruit kids and we can get kids who are going to be in AP classes and are going to be on sports and are going to help us build those programs, that's a different story. But we don't know what we're going to get. We might get those, we might not get those. We might get kids who come in and they need additional services. Additional services that are going to far outstrip $5,000. So that's my philosophy on school choice and it's not personal. I, I'll do respect to the parent that's here.
Mine's already here.
What's that?
Mine's already here.
Yeah, you're good. Alright. That's just my personal opinion on it for the taxpayers of the town. We're already asking them for a lot for the kids that are here. That's just, $5,000 is gonna make it move.
I want to piggyback on what you said. I've always been a pretty big supporter of school choice because I know it's what allows us to have more programs, more classes, you know, we have smaller classes. My concern right now, and, and I'm feeling like maybe it's a school choice freeze for now. We're in the only state in the union that has a law that anybody that comes to the state gets housing. If you are considered homeless, you are, you know, allowed to come to schools. And I, I'm not going to, not here to debate that. My concern is, you have students that are coming in that probably don't speak the language of our country. At some point, are those school choice positions going to be opened up to students who may not speak the language, may not be in this area, maybe from another town, but are now being busted? And now we have this huge expense of trying to educate them and that's going to pull from the education of our students that are here. I just feel like we're in a very tentative time right now and to not look at the elephant that's in the room, that might be very, very costly. And I'm not talking, you know, I'm, I'm talking, if you just look at it from the amount of money that we're going to get, what are we spending? Like $18,000 a student?
Average for people's expense.
And that's, that's, and that's someone who, you know, can speak the language.
That's just average, yeah.
It's just, so you're already at a deficit of 13,000. Now you hit someone in who, you know, might speak, you, let's say you get 10 kids in and they speak six different languages. How do you, we, we are supposed to educate our children to the best of our ability. And my concern is that we'd be pulling from what our students have right now. The very little money that we have that we're getting by, we've already talked about things that we've cut that are going to affect the schools as far as just all different things.
We did cut ELL, didn't we?
No.
We just didn't increase it.
Didn't, we wanted to increase it, but we didn't.
Things that would have helped.
So we cut it from the proposal, yeah.
So, and that's my concern. My concern is we're sitting in a really, we're, we're in unprecedented times. And so I'm feeling like it's, it's a time where we need to hesitate and not always do what we've done and really just consider the cost and the impact of that before we make a decision.
I think also like the apartments at Soul Street, I mean, that's a lot of units that could move in with teenagers and.
And I did look at their, their available June 1st. So that's dwell in advance of schedule.
Yeah, there's studio, one bedroom, two bedrooms.
And I agree with you, like, I think when I, you know, not to overgeneralize, but like I think about who's moving into apartments, it's probably people that got divorced. They might have older children, you know, they're right here, the school is close, they're commuting, they're professionals, they're, they're expensive, you know, they're.
They're very expensive.
Yeah, that, you're, you could have a huge influx of children, both for BES and Tohoto. So I mean, if, I'm not opposed to, to approving zero school choice across the board, except for maybe the one kindergarten spot at BES.
Just being in real estate, you're never going to know the students until the lease is signed. So even if they say they're going to cap it at however many children.
Yeah.
Until they move in, you don't know because you're not allowed to ask.
Yep.
So.
Yep.
It's a crapshoot there.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. Lisa, what do you think?
I think you make a great point.
Yeah.
And I think we should be concerned about that.
What about Julie?
I, 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 this is a hard conversation to have because we were here last year, we did the same thing. And I brought up, why don't we do exit interviews on the kids that leave? And so we have no understanding of why kids are leaving.
We need to do that again.
Wondering about what we should do for school choice numbers without any understanding about why our kids are leaving. But yeah, we can look at the enrollment history and the numbers are alarming from sixth to 12. But yeah, we don't have any data to support why that happens.
We have been asking for that since Jeff was here.
Yep, we have been asking.
So I think that needs to be an initiative, if possible, by the district. And again, I don't know if that, it probably should come from Tohoto. And maybe one of the assistant principals, you know, maybe the middle school assistant principal should, that should be something that that person owns. And, you know, if there's children that are exiting in middle school or in high school, I think a lot, it's usually like between eighth and ninth grade.
Yeah, and like Mike's point about you don't want to leave and Lisa's point, you don't think 11th and 12th grade, you generally probably don't get kids coming in, right, school choice. I mean, it's got to be, or, 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 yeah. But if we can, you know, talk about those two kids who are here talking about it, that they have half their class going on this senior trip. But if you can build a community in sixth, seventh, eighth grade, that's where you have to build it.
Julie, I'm with you, I'm with you on that.
So by not saying no to all these school choice numbers in sixth, seventh, eighth, I think that's a mistake.
But how do you build a local, how do you build a local program?
Only ones that, I, I.
We're only talking about high spots.
You're only about.
She doesn't have.
What I'm saying, eighth grade.
Julie, you had half, not even half senior class going on this trip.
Right?
None for eighth, none for.
She already says none for seven or eight.
Right, none for seven.
And five.
Excuse.
That's my point, that's my point. I could see seventh, you have 95.
I, I think that number's going to change. I just want to put that out there though.
Seventh is going to go up.
We do lose kids in seventh grade.
Of course, yes.
And we're going to lose some because of private schools now having a middle school option from seven to 12.
Correct.
There's going to be a good handful of these sixth graders that go off to St. John's.
Correct.
And then again, we lose them eighth to ninth as those ninth graders either go on to, you know, larger high schools, you know, for, for more sports and academic opportunities. But I think, yeah, really collecting that data rather than, I mean, I have a lot of informal data, you know what I mean? But, and I do have those conversations already, so I would be comfortable with making something, you know, a standard kind of data, you know, template for that. You know, I think that would be important to also hear from the, the parents, right? You know, I think that's a really important piece.
Right, exactly, yeah.
No, I, I'm with you. You have to build that community six, seven, eight. But the class that was just here tonight, not even half of them are going on the senior trip. You're not going to improve that by school choice. You're going to improve that by, like, what you want. More opportunities, more clubs, more classes. We don't know why they're leaving. There might be nothing we can do about it. There might be something we can do about it. Until we know what it is, we can't make a decision.
We can, we can, we can, we can.
We can.
Well, well, I have four kids in the district that are 10th, sixth, seventh, eighth. I know how their friends are leaving.
Okay, why are they leaving?
A lot of those numbers.
Why are they leaving?
With sports.
So let's just become on the sports.
Just like Lisa said about our student data, we don't have a lot of club offerings here after school. We don't have clubs after school. They're run during lunches because we can't run them after school because sports starts after school. There's a host of reasons people are leaving.
So how does school choice fix that?
I don't necessarily know that school choice necessarily fix that, but it creates a bigger number. It's a better opportunity for kids. Because then you have more kids participating in the drama.
So if we approve the number that you want to approve, whatever that number is, I don't, I don't know, I don't, don't tell a number.
No, I don't even have a number.
If we approved a number.
Yeah.
You're telling me this time next year, those clubs and sports and classes will exist and will be on our way to improve.
No, I think that's a bigger, that's a bigger conversation. I think sports needs to be pushed back. I think the club needs to start from going from 215 to.
I think that's a different conversation.
It is a different conversation.
Than school choice.
You're 100% right, but this, if we continue to just say, it's okay, we're going to just let these kids go.
No, it's not okay. We've been asking for this data on exit interviews for three years.
Well, we just, I, I don't know. I think, I think 90 is a good number in that middle school. Obviously you're over in some of those classes, but to not have 90 in middle school when you know these kids are going to be leaving.
90 Berlin Boyleson kids would be awesome. 40 Berlin Boyleson kids, 50 out of town kids is not awesome. And it's not fair to the taxpayers.
What percentage did you just say?
I don't know, I just made up random numbers.
Well, that's not going to.
We don't, we don't have, we don't have that data, that.
Yeah, they have it there.
You want 90, alright, so you want 90 kids in every grade.
So you have 13% of the current eighth graders' school choice. That's a pretty, that's, I mean, that's, that's a pretty low number. I think it's high.
14 out of 71.
13%, yeah.
I'm curious, for like AP classes and stuff, is there a minimum of each level of class?
Um, I, we have to get school committee approval that the enrollment is five or, like.
Under five.
Like under five, right.
Okay, so do you guys want to vote on school choice now?
I'm curious, like, is there, for when kids enroll in other schools, is there any sort of, like, like deadlines for those schools that we know, so at that point we know better numbers of who's leaving?
I, I haven't, I mean, there are deadlines, but I don't, I mean, I haven't gotten anything additional.
That would be part of exit interviews.
For school choice, you mean? Oh, you mean if kids are going to private?
Yeah. Private school usually opens their enrollment in January.
Yeah.
And usually they need their numbers by March. That, working in also in the private school, you know, system in different places, it, it doesn't then necessarily mean that they're cutting off in March. But people start that application piece in January and that's why we really wanted to make sure we start having those nights. You know, we pushed up our nights for high school, grade to, you know, the kind of the informal session, those, those pieces to get that information out there of what Tohoto can offer. We pushed that up a bit. And, yeah, I mean, I, I think, I think that, I think something also to realize in that, I don't, I don't know what those trends look like over the years, but something to, to think about as I have a junior in high school myself, right? These, these numbers of high school, you know, this projection of the senior class and our junior class here, not feeling maybe as settled as the community, really goes back to what we went through with COVID. So many of our students, you know, my daughter, I live in West Boyleson, she goes to St. Vernon's High because there was no school, right, in, in public schools, right? I mean, so there's a lot of kids right now in our high schools that are, that are either school choice or transient or have gone somewhere else and then just kind of stayed there, right? So I think it's going to be really good data over the next couple of years to, to, to take. And then really, I do think this middle school piece, having those senses of community, seeing what we can offer for them in middle school, so they want to stay as a group, not leave their friends, not leave their community for high school, is extremely important. And I would just ask, I'm very comfortable doing, you know, those exit interviews with the families, but just really making sure that we're getting the data that you want, right? So thinking about some of those specific questions that you would like me to ask. You know, I have some in mind, but I think that's important because we talk a lot about data and then we come to meetings, they, well, oh, could we have that as well, which I, you know. So just taking some time to kind of think about what that is, because this will be the time, right, it's April, right? We're going to know within a month or so, you know, by, by June, if kids are not returning. And I already know certainly some boys that are heading to St. John's for seventh grade for various reasons, so.
And I, you know, Mas Academy, I, there, there's always. And, and, you know, three to five that go to Mas Academy and that is the school associated with WPI. And that's a very small, very pointed particular group of students who do that. And, and then they've been wanting to do that. There's no, I, I don't.
It's very elite too.
It's very, yes, it's very elite, so.
I mean, at this point, we don't know what data we don't know or need, right? So we need to just, my first question, why, why did you leave Tohoto? If it's for a trade, nothing we can do. Is it for sports? Maybe we can do something, maybe we can't. Is it for math, science, business? We can probably do something for that. We can.
Culture and climate.
Portrait, portrait graduate internship program. I mean, we probably need more internships with actual companies, but those types of things, Julie, is the program that's going to build the, the homegrown, the organic growth in our own students. If, if we don't have those programs right now, there's other reasons why people would want a school choice to Tohoto. What are those? I don't know, but they're not, you want to build sports. We don't have sports.
I want to build, I want to build the arts program.
Okay, you want to build the sports and arts. We don't have those right now. So logic would say a kid's not school choicing to Tohoto to take art or sports, because we don't have them.
Well, no, we do, we do, but oftentimes the numbers prohibit.
I understand we have sports. I walked by a trophy case outside.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I know we have art. But the point, like, you're trying to build a program. You have to build it from within. You can't build it by trying to convince people to come here and then don't give them what they are looking for.
You also have no idea for school choice who you're going to get, so you can't.
Yeah, we love school choice kids that are high performing.
Oh, I'm sure.
I'm sure they are.
Great athletes. Yes, I'm sure. It's just the same thing as the people from the town. You have no idea who's going to come up and play sports or who's going to do drama or who's going to do nothing or who's going to need services or who, you have no idea.
So if we are going to vote, Lisa, my understanding was you, these are requests, but you're saying that's something different.
No, I, I.
You're, what you just said, you would request zero.
These are, these are requests. Because I think, my understanding is this is what I was asked to do. So I looked at the numbers and these are, these are the available. So I looked at the numbers, and these are, um, these, these are the avail, what I view as being the available space in the grade levels that I identified.
Yeah, you were asked to give the available space, but this isn't necessarily what you think is what you want, that's what I said, she doesn't, that's what I, right?
Yeah, exactly, can I just ask, what, let me just ask this, why would we do five in twelve and none in eight?
Um, because I think that ninety-five, eighty-five, and eighty-nine, um, are for seven, eight, and nine, I think those are good numbers that we can, we can manage. I think ninety-five is actually a lot of kids, but, I mean, and I, I, I.
So I guess my question would be.
Like, twelve, twelve, we really, I mean, at, at twelfth grade, I mean, I put five in there, cause I mean, we could have five, but are we really gonna get?
I don't see any point for any in twelve, right, one.
Five kids. Right. Right.
Yeah.
Nine.
But I would just shift the numbers up to your middle level, so.
But, no, I, I, like, that doesn't work.
But she's saying that's too much.
There's no space.
There's no space.
How, how, how is this, how is this, this is my question.
Because we're not old.
How do you space for ninety-five and seven, but eighty-five and eight?
We're not Boston, we're not a big school.
Because you, you, like, you, it's a little, it's like, like a little Rubik's Cube of, you know, we're shifting, we're, like, we're shifting resources for those kids.
At ninety-five.
I don't understand.
You know, at the, at the, at the eight, at the eighty-five, you know.
At ninety-five, it's a big number.
It's for the teachers and the classes.
It's for the teachers and the classes to, like, frustrate classes and, right.
But you still have, but you still have, doesn't matter, you still have twenty, 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 or twenty-two, 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 twenty-two.
So I think eighty is your target, what you're ideal.
Eighty, eighty's an ideal number for.
Eight class.
It'd be eight, between eighty and eighty-five.
For this building, for this building.
Julie, we are not a big town, we're a small town.
Yeah, I understand. Well, in this building, we've already talked about the space issues in this building, I mean, you know, you know what I'm saying, I mean, you can't even have the whole senior class to even park the cars here. Ninety-seven, it's a special.
Well, that's, that's a whole separate issue.
Yeah, no, with you.
Can I, I just, can I make one comment to it, someone I wanted to say earlier, and it's very positive, I'm like, just needs to be said. You noted that the middle school, there was so much, um, suspicion with the parents that showed up.
The light is young.
And that gives me hope, because that shows a cultural shift here, that shows that the parents, and I think the, the reason maybe the high school didn't is because when you, when we used to get here in sixth grade, it used to be like, okay, thank you, you know, like, the kids are on their own now, and that was, that was just the way it was. But now it's like, okay, your, your kids, please come in, they want you to see what we're doing, they want you to know, and I think that's really important, that the community is involved. And I'm hoping that that's gonna shift as time goes on to the upper grades, and maybe it'll be a different model, I don't know. But that to me says that you guys have done a lot of work, and the teachers have done a lot of work to get the parents and the students interested in coming in and showing off their work, and so I just wanted to applaud you for that, cause that's huge. I mean, it's, I just, wonderful, thank you.
All right, we're gonna vote on school choice.
I just have one more thing to say.
Go ahead, last thing.
I just think it's a tough, you guys have two minutes, we're not gonna be.
I just think it's, it's not happening.
Megan, can I, can I say something, Megan? You've been rushing this whole meeting, we meet once a month on the whole friggin' school district. Stop rushing us through the information that we need. You talk to these guys one-on-one every day, you know what's going on. The other five of us don't. Stop rushing us, we'll take the time that we need.
Okay.
Don't cancel. All right. I'm curious with the numbers, so I mean, you know, we're, we're concerned about the school street, construction, right? You know, we don't think twelfth graders, maybe not eleventh graders, I mean, do we think because there, there's that such are you, would your preference be zero, Trump's the war?
I think my preference, I, I, I'm worried about the bill, I really am worried about the building, I'm, I'm worried about the, like, I don't know what that's gonna do. So I, we could say, well, we're voting, and then we have eighty for the, um, sixth grade, and then all of a sudden, you know, we get twelve to fifteen kids from the apartments. I mean, that is worrisome, but then I hear all the budget talk, so as, so you have to understand from my point of view, where I'm, where I'm sitting. I, I hear the budget stuff, and then I, I live in the building, and I live with the kids. So there's these two, and they're, they're, there's kind of opposing views in terms of school choice. Because school choice monies have funded things, and then to say, no school choice.
But we're still getting the income from the current school choice.
Right, but if we have, yeah, right.
We're just adding, we, we hypothesize it would not be adding to that income.
Do we have any data from the Berlin apartments that affected Tohoto enrollment?
We know we have students living there.
Right, we, we know the students who are living there.
Numbers wise, or.
So we know.
Oh, my troops are severing. For all the apartments, it was very surprising.
Right, that's what I mean, so we think about like, oh my god, these apartments are gonna bring in forty kids, you don't know, right?
You don't know.
But there, there are studies, right? That was presented on the Berlin floor, remember, they got up and they have charts upon charts upon charts that said, how many kids are we coming into the school district? I don't understand the numbers on all that, but, what do you say was accurate?
It ended up being accurate, we were very afraid when those went up, cause it's huge, it's gotta be double the size of what's going on.
It is huge. Couple of bedrooms.
I was gonna say, how many bedrooms?
Most of the bedrooms in Trailways, Trail, whatever it is, are, they're like one bedroom apartments.
In the Boyleson one?
In the Boyleson, Berlin is more of a mix, um.
Well, that's a.
No, there's two, there's two and three bedroom apartments that are big, right, in Boyleson. There's a couple of apartment complexes, so there's a high end behind Clinton savings, I don't think, I don't I haven't seen anybody coming from, from there, but the, the new ones that are just opening up, and it's next, or, like, right off of one four.
Yeah.
Those are, there's one, two, and three bedrooms, and there are, yes.
I mean, to Lisa's point about the budget, I mean, ten kids, that's fifty grand, the budget's twenty-some odd million?
I mean, it's a two million one anyway.
I think the tough thing is to, as far as the numbers, you know, these are the projected numbers based on what we have now, we, and we don't know, like, like I said, I, I know that, that ninety-five is not necessarily the same ninety-five students that are here now, right? Cause I do know probably at least five that are not going to be returning, right? But again, you don't know how many are gonna be coming in.
Is that seventh grade?
For, like, right, the rising, right, the seventh graders, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Lisa, did you have a question?
Yes, so I just wanna build a little bit on what Lori brought up. I'm usually in favor of school choice, like, I, I think it's a great thing in general, but to Lori's point, we are in unprecedented times. And we do have an influx of migrants, and many more are coming, right? And they have a right to shelter, and these are people from all over the world speaking many different languages. And, like, if we look at, if we accept four kids in tenth grade, and they all speak a different language, we're required then to translate all of the materials for them, right? And be able to present to them and educate them in their language, and that's for every class for three years, right? And I'm just wondering, how disruptive would that be, and how much would that cost?
I, that's, and that's my concern, I, I love school choice, I love, I love the, um, what it gives the school as far as numbers and, and the money, and I just, just people from different backgrounds, I think it's wonderful. But this year, that's my concern, is I don't wanna take from the education of the kids that are currently here.
Right.
Taxpayers, school choice, whoever, everybody's taxpayer, if you live in the state. I don't wanna take from any of them where we don't know, there's a lot of, um, we just don't know what's gonna happen, and, and I feel like it's, it's a risk. And especially, I mean, even if you take that piece out, and you just go with this enormous, like, I was, we were just looking at the listings, there are this one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedrooms at the end of Sewell, and I don't know that the other apartments had three bedrooms, that's a, that's completely different. I just feel like, I've always supported, I feel like you, Lisa, it's, it's a wonderful program. It's just, I feel, I'm not a gambler, and I feel like it's really, that's not good.
Yeah, like, right now, like, if we're ever gonna not do it, this is the year to not do it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm curious, I mean, if we vote now a certain way, is, can you, or if you desire to suggest a placement, like, I don't know, come August, is that, I, cause I know, one, last year, I think you advocated for an additional slot after, after the other numbers and, and stuff like that.
Yeah.
It's, it, you know, it.
But can you open up school slots in the, it has to be for the following year, it can't be, like, if in December, you say, oh, we.
No, I, I mean, I, I, if, if, if school committee votes for it.
Right.
Yep, and, and that's, and that has always been my understanding, that this is a, a school committee decision. So, so when, when the, this to me reflects the available space, it really is a school committee decision in terms of what you want to see. I, I can give my input, I can reflect on it, um, I think school choice is great, and ninety and nine, I think those are pivotal years. Those are, are, are really great years to get students in. The other years are, are very tricky, because, um, you know, why, you, you wanna, you wanna understand the why, and we can't. So this, this request is a reflection of opportunity that is available. But it really is what school committee's desire is.
Are there any, um, current siblings that you know are on line, that you would advocate for?
Not that, I, I don't, I'm not a married siblings, everybody who's in is already in with their siblings.
And maybe a couple of middle, again, school choice siblings, right? So there, there is a couple of current school choice here at Tohoto in the high school that I think they're hoping for their middle school sibling, um, to come in, and then I know that we fielded calls in the office as far as, do, what do you have, and, you know, not always the grade levels match up, right? So there's a lot of those calls that come in, if the siblings match.
Can we allow no school choice except for siblings?
I, it's, it's a lottery, you can't do that.
So speaking of, speaking of siblings, Cindy does have one sibling request. But you also have one, you also have one opening, one open spot in the secondary.
Because we know that's that specific sibling. Oh, no, she said that was from, uh, we already, that was one that we approved before the child was in school and left.
And it's not full, right, so it's not full.
There's an empty spot there.
So instead of approving a new one, we can just use that one, or, or transfer it, or switch it, or.
The existing?
Yeah.
If it's existing, is it?
That, so that's, that was your question, is it existing, the kid left?
You mean, but it's a different, it's a different grade?
Cause.
You mean, transfer the one from second grade into inner, all right.
Yeah.
Cause you don't, no one needs the spot in second grade. Is that true, Cindy?
Well, we have applications for that, um, with staff members in the district.
Staff members, is my understanding, so this is non-teacher staff members, cause the teachers, is my understanding, they have a right to roll the kids.
With a teacher. So teach, so, so, and my current, so teachers can school choice in if they elect to do so?
But it doesn't need to be approved as a school choice, it's part of the, one of their benefits is through their contract.
They have to have.
No.
The school choice opening.
Yeah, we looked at the policy, yeah.
I thought, uh, no, I thought that was a COVID thing that came out of COVID, no?
No.
Alright.
We were gonna change it, we never did. It's teachers, it's not staff, and it's, it's only.
Right, that's what we're talking about, teachers.
Yeah, but it's only spots that we approve. So we have to decide on school choice, then we open up the lottery. Teachers, children, and siblings get first preference in the lottery, but we have to approve the spots first, based on the space in the buildings. So which is what we're deciding now. So.
So both, so wanna be ES?
So Cindy said that there's another staff member that wants a second grade spot as well.
Gotcha.
So that would be the existing one, instead of.
The existing one, and then she wants to add one in kindergarten for another staff member.
For sibling.
All right, do you guys wanna vote on ES school choice, cause that seems pretty simple.
Is it a, is it a staff member or a sibling?
It's a sibling who's also a staff member, she said, it's a teacher.
Two, so there's a, there's already a child in there in the, in the circle grade that has a sibling coming in kindergarten. And then we'll have a staff member, the second grade child, and a kindergarten child. That being said, if we keep the second grade, like, if one knew the existing one, or just the existing one, it brings that child in, I'm hesitant with K. I did vote, due to the sibling bringing one in, I think we need to see those numbers more, I, I don't want those numbers to spike up. We just, it's an unknown.
Yeah.
We wanna keep those numbers low, especially for lots of.
Keep them low now, and if we know different in June, we can revisit.
So you want one, you're supporting, you're recommending one in K and one in two?
No, she just said she doesn't, she's not so sure.
Zero in K and one in.
The sibling in K, so the sibling of the already.
So that's one in K.
One in K, and so then.
And then the one in second grade. One in two. One in second, one in second and one in K, alright, so, so that, that's how you have your, it in your report, is what you're recommending.
But if you're looking at it, it would be one existing in second grade, so there's one already there, open, if that's open, we don't need that spot, it's still open. There's a, if we can get that staff member's child in the cat, what's gonna hold that up is the K spot. But right now, I'm suggesting just that one, be the sibling for K.
Okay, all right. So, yeah, so we have to vote on adding one spot in K.
And the sibling is not related to staff?
No, they're both staff members.
Yeah.
There's, alright.
So there's possible two students, uh, kids of staff that wanna go into K, second in K.
Second.
Yeah, yeah, second, we're talking just K, you just said zero for second for right now, the one in K.
The one existing. The one existing in second, and that's still open, keep it open.
Yeah.
Um, and then one in K right now, and I like the idea of waiting till August to see the number.
So that would change these numbers that we're looking at on your sheet to zero for two, because there is an existing, we don't need to vote on an existing.
Right.
In one K.
I think you have.
That sibling in K, is that the staff member, or is that Justin?
That is a staff member that already has a child in there.
Okay.
I think, I think you'll have to vote again.
We haven't voted yet.
On the, I'm, I'm, no, I bet you have to, even though there is an existing spot because somebody left, you have to kind of re-vote in that, that spot, even though it's already there, it's kind of a.
We're not sure that it exists after the child leaves, so rather than have to worry about it if somebody raises a question later, if you just, would you vote on the acknowledged that existing school choice slot still exists?
It's not new, it's just.
So, so it would be, could I have a motion to approve school choice at Boyleson Elementary School as follows, one spot in kindergarten and one spot in second grade? Right?
Uh, no, it would be, uh.
For two, the two spots in second grade?
No.
No, it's, it's one spot, it's one or zero, it's one or zero.
One in spot in second grade and one in K.
It's one or zero, it's unknown, the one in kindergarten, the one in second would be for, only for the existing spot that has already been voted to remain open. It's not two in, in, in second.
No, it's one in second and one in K.
Yes, I just said that.
That's a fact.
You said two.
No, my motion was one.
No, it was two.
Lisa?
One in?
Nicole?
One in kindergarten.
The motion was one.
One in kindergarten, two is second, you said.
No, I said one in second.
One in second.
Lori said two.
I said one and one, the motion on the table is one and one, one in second and one in K.
Okay.
That's the motion on the table, that's what Cindy's needed, so moved.
Second.
Any more discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I'm an aye as well. All right, so do we have to approve adding none in Berlin?
For the record, I'm, I'm opposed.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said I.
No.
All right, so one opposed. Do we have to vote in Berlin on zero? All right, could I have a motion to approve no school choice spots for Berlin Memorial School?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I'm an aye as well, that motion passes. All right, so it sounds like Tohoto, I'm gonna just put a motion out there, and then we can talk about it, all right? So could I please have a motion to approve zero school choice spots at Tohoto?
So moved.
All right, Lisa.
Second.
All right, Lori, discussion?
I don't like it.
Ah, it's, ugh, yeah.
Agita.
We know, we know, we know, we lose kids for me tonight massively.
We know that if we can build a middle school culture, our kids, I firmly believe will stay in this. Not all of them, we're not gonna keep the kids that wanna do the trades. You know, we're not, we're not gonna keep those stellar, stellar athletes maybe that wanna go to St. John's and play group B hockey, right? But we, 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 we can, we can do better if we keep these kids, we have to build culture.
Let's do that.
Yeah, let's do that, that's not a conversation.
I think we gotta, no, no, and I appreciate that the vice principal there, that, that's driving and helping at that middle school level. Or, and I've been saying this for a long time, that if, if we can lock in that middle school, we're gonna be a good team.
John, do you have rumors of any sixth grader or current graders for, and Cindy not going to talk to?
Not a rumor, I had a request for a reference, the siblings already in private schools, so the brother in the Berlin school.
And a lot of those private schools, again, it's that seventh grade opening, you know, um, you have a lot of private schools that are like, you know, pre-K to K to eight. And then you have a lot of our, the middle high private schools have now started seventh and 12th. And that is also something to just note as a difference in the last ten or so years, Notre Dame, St. John's, that's new that they opened those seventh and eighth grade programs. Um, Holyne as well, which is now St. Paul's, that's new, that's seventh grade, right? So, that's new in recent years.
So, what I, I, with the numbers, I, I opposed to zero, not for budgetary purposes at all, um, help us, helps. But I would move, I would just shift the numbers around that are here. Do one in 12, three in 11, the 10th grade is so small. And you don't know unless you're like in it with your kids, you know, and their friends, and you, it's a, it's, small can be detrimental, that's a small, 76 kids is small. Graduated class of 65 is small. Um, and then at that middle school level, I understand your point, you know, you'd like to keep it at 80. Um, but I mean, we, we have, we have like seventh, we have currently 89 residential kids in seventh grade. I think wanting, wanting to keep it at 80 is.
I mean, I don't think seven, 95 or that 88, it's at 85.
I would go to 90.
Thirty, eighty-nine.
Yep, I would go to 90 everywhere, all that, seventh, eighth, ninth.
I mean, I.
Ninety, ninety-nine.
Kind of looking at the sixth grade, like, but.
Sure, same.
Maybe not five as room to, or the apartments.
Yep, I don't.
I don't know if I agree with that in, at night, it's already one of the biggest classes, like, the upcoming ninth grade. Those, those numbers also, I, I think do, will shift.
Well, because that's current times without the, at the St. John, St. Mark's, and that number's 100% gonna shift.
But we can vote that, if we, if that number is low, can't we vote it again in like September, you know, January, right?
I don't know, I'd like to check with first.
So, thank you, so I know by now, St. John's has said to the middle school and the, the high school, they, do they let you know? Or is it at the mercy of the family, the parents?
Oh, they're not gonna be, they're probably not gonna wanna let.
So, that's why we, we don't have, like, I, I can ask the guidance counselors all I want, but maybe if the parents don't say anything, I don't know who's leaving.
Right.
I, I have no way of knowing who's leaving.
Right.
Right.
So, it's a guess, yeah. But you didn't have to open a song for them, is that? Like, if they didn't enroll for fall classes or something?
No, everybody's still enrolled, everybody's still enrolled, even if they go to the aspect, because they'll be on the last minute change. So, everybody who, everybody who's a resident still enrolls for class in case something falls. And you know, what if, what if a parent loses their job? And they're like, oh, they can't afford the tuition, you know, I mean, there's, there are myriad reasons for, right?
Julie, until we get the X data, until we get the second data.
Well, we, we know, no, that's true.
We, we won't know.
We won't know why they leave, but we can certainly look at you, at the enrollment history, we can certainly look at the enrollment history.
And see what happened.
From FY 17 up till now, ready to come back.
We can see how many leave, we can't see why they leave.
The numbers are stacked, yes, look at it.
Yes, why are they leaving, is it because we don't have X, or is it because they're just, we don't do trades? I mean, I don't know, do you know, do you know, do you know?
Well, I don't know.
The vote, there's a motion on the table, it's vote on.
Alright, anyone else, any more discussion?
So, just historically speaking.
It's around 10.
10. 10 to 13.
Moreish, but 10 plus.
Average value.
Except 23.
Yeah, we know, we do.
Alright.
23, 25.
We're gonna vote, and then if it, if it fails, then we'll make another motion. Alright, so the motion on the table is zero. Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm an aye, opposed.
No.
Okay, so that was two opposed, four in favor, that motion passes.
Sorry, can, can we have it on the agenda for like June? If there's any recommend, like recommendations from Lisa, like if there's a sibling or enough, or once we get a better idea of who.
If we have more data, but we already voted on it, so, yeah, if we have more data, yeah. If there's, if there's some changes, absolutely, Jess, I'm not opposed to that. Alright, Janelle?
Okay, right, right. Yeah, I am. Sure. Um, sure, so, um, I, I submitted a report in collaboration with Sally and Jean. Um, and as we were finalizing our budget needs for FY 25, putting our proposals together, DESI's annual local special education determination was released. We were extremely disappointed to receive a needs intervention rating for 2023. Um, leading up to 2023, the district always received a needs requirements, which is the top tier rating. Um, so this definitely came as a, a bit of a surprise, and as an admin team, we took some time to, um, dive into that rating and the data. Um, to better understand it, there's, uh, there are a couple pieces that I'm still working on, and DESI frankly has been a little bit slow in, in rolling out some of that information. So, there are two details that, um, I'm not entirely, um, at full speed with just yet, but we're getting there. Um, so, the rating is among eight interconnected ways that DESI supervises school districts, and there's a graphic that I included in the report to show you that. So, that graphic represents this annual rating that we received. And interestingly, it also includes that TFM rating that we had received, um, and that I spoke about earlier this school year. When we did our tiered focus monitoring earlier this school year for special education and for civil rights, um, the district was found to be in compliance with all criteria review. So, there were no, um, there weren't issues there. And that TFM included an extensive, um, look at our procedures, our policies, our, as well as our student records, and it included interviews. So, it was a more holistic look at our, um, practices and procedures. And, um, but going back to this rating that we're talking about today, um, this report indicates that despite all of that proper implementation of special education requirements and civil rights. The outcomes for students, for special education students is not what we would like it to see in some areas. The data points that are included in that 2023 rating are from 21, 22, and 23. And I don't believe that they are necessarily news to us as a school community. Um, some of the issues, or most of the issues actually identified were corrected before the rating report even came out. Um, as required, we're engaged in DESI's technical assistance, rep cause analysis, and improvement planning. And the details of that improvement planning that are already underway are also described in the report. Any questions? Open it up for questions.
For the tiered focus monitoring, who was the body that did that?
That's also DESI.
That's also DESI.
Yes, so, and that's the part of, that they take a look at districts in so many different ways, which is why I included that little puzzle piece graphic. To show that they, it's not just a one and done look and review at school districts, they have many different ways to come, um, in and take a look.
I have another question. For, for indicator three, the item one that you talked about, what are the standards they're talking about, is that MCAS?
Indicator three does refer to MCAS, and that's the graph of data that's on page, that is also on page three, coincidentally. Um, and there's, there are four areas that indicator three is broken down into. Um, and so ultimately, indicator three is a comparison of proficiency rates for students with and without disabilities. And the issue is in the gap, um, for achievement in those students.
What, what is the approved or acceptable gap?
It is, oh, that's a great question, I'm not sure that, I, I would have to get back to you on that, on what the acceptable gap did, gap is, it's a good question. Done by percentage, right, so, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I'll keep an eye out for that detail.
I would imagine it would greatly vary upon the students that have the IP's and what their combination.
You know, I don't, I actually, I doubt that, to be honest, I, I really do think this is a really a comparison, you have this many students with IP's, without IP's that are taking the test. Uh, I don't believe that that's differentiated by disability or level of need.
I'm just in real life.
Yes, yes, but I don't believe it's taken account to in this rating or in this data.
Feel free to. Um, in the elementary, um, kind of interventions that you've mentioned, you've mentioned the Orton-Gillingham program. Um, I'm curious when that was implemented, like what year, so maybe we don't see that, that, those effects yet? And then if that program is evidence based, because I know there's a lot of, you know, old school reading versus.
Yeah, um, Orton-Gillingham definitely follows the science of reading, it's, it's up to speed on all of the modern, um, you know, philosophies in reading instruction, it's definitely up to par. The district started training educators in Orton-Gillingham, I don't know, maybe five or so years ago. Um, but we have definitely increased, um, our focus on that, and we have been able to train additional educators, especially in the last couple of years. Um, at Tohoto, there is an Orton-Gillingham certified educator, and there's one at, um, Boylston who's in process of earning her certification. Hopefully by the end of the school year, it's an incredibly intensive process, um, and there is one in Berlin as well that is certified. And in addition to that, we have educators who have received training in those methodologies, but perhaps haven't received full certification.
As you mentioned in your report, the 10 half days, that we approved in our calendar, I would imagine, still.
Mm-hmm, absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
Be more, you know, implemented across the district.
Um.
Sorry.
Are you also?
Okay.
That'd be a good one.
I, I also have questions, I know Lisa has questions, mostly.
No, Jess, are you all done?
I, uh.
Go ahead, Jess.
Okay. Um. It was awesome to see that you mentioned the Quest Walk is gonna be moving not only from the middle school, but now into Tohoto. So, have, the teachers will have that period of time to do those interventions without them missing out on subjects. Um, and then also the STAD program, the VITE program, that it has social, emotional learning components, an adjustment counselor, and a paraprofessional that helps kids coming from absences into, you know, back into the lead school.
And actually, just due to a grant that we just received, we now have a coach from DESI for people with individuals that have that, and give them additional suggestions and those kinds of things, so they've just started that.
And go for it, I'm, apparently, I know it's me.
Okay, Julie, did you, I don't know, or Lori, those were great, Lisa?
I was just wondering, do you have any idea if this is a trend that is being seen in other school districts in the state?
Um, you know, I don't have a sense of that, to be honest with you, I think that, you know, the rating comes out each year. To be honest, they change the criteria for the, the rating each year, I, my understanding is it was changed quite a bit this year. Um, and I think that there's so many different variables and variables, and it's so data driven, um, that I do believe that the size of a, a school district can contribute to perhaps the rating. Um, you know, there was one area that was, you know, not a strength for us, but it really came down to, we only had a dataset of one student. Um, and unfortunately, it was not, it wasn't even about the student, it was about like the meeting date. Um, so I know that that, the district size sort of worked against us in that one way.
Yeah.
But I don't have a, I don't have a sense of that.
Did you see that goalpost change or the, the criteria changed this year?
Yes, and my understanding is that it actually changes each year, um, and my understanding is, you know, it shifts a little bit. I mean, I don't think it's over here and then over here, it's, it's sort of swaying a little bit in the same area, it's all about federal indicators. Um, and the, um, my understanding is there were more substantial changes to it this year than perhaps in previous years.
And schools aren't told those changes beforehand, so they can work on it?
Um, I, I don't believe so, I believe that they're announced, I mean, to be honest, this 2023 rating didn't come out until just a handful of weeks ago. So, it, it feels like it's, that information is coming up much later. And I don't know that this is, it, it's so data driven, I don't know if this is necessarily something like the test that we can study for and let, really riff off on.
Well, there's, there's things you are supposed to be doing to fix this, so you can't just start working on those before the evaluation, like, they're gonna change the.
I think she said she did.
Yeah, actually, some of these pieces that were, were corrected before the rating even came out.
Right, so you have now, so that's my question, do you know how the rating or how the evaluation criteria is going to change, so you can start to address that, but you're saying no?
Not necessarily, no, I mean, we know what those federal indicators are, we know what that whole set is, I mean, those are well known. Which ones they're gonna choose to include in the rating each year can change a little bit.
So, what, I mean, how, how does a school fall so far, I mean, this is the, the lowest rating?
No, it is not, there's a rating, there's a rating below.
So, the one rating below, so we were high, there's a rating below that, and then we're here, and then there's one lower.
Yep, and we were, um, half of one percentage point away from the, the, the rating above. You know, and the, the score is the score, again, we're very disappointed by it, um, but in looking at it statistically, you know, we're the, the very high range of that.
So, last year, we asked for a lot of money from the towns and the budget for special ed. We asked for a lot, this year again, not necessarily getting everything we asked for. This is a tough blow to the taxpayers that we're asking money for.
But it was 23, right, so our budget this year didn't.
Mary doesn't care about that, Mary's gonna see this and say, you know, you asked for all this money and yet your rating fell. So, how do we, how do we address?
I mean, our response is why, that's why we needed it, because we saw this happening, and this year will be better.
You know, we hear from the teachers all the time when we're talking about MCAT scores, we heard from him, uh, it was January, February? The state wants these kids to fail, they set the tests up for them to fail, and then they now failed the school because the kids did fail. How, is that, how does that relate?
Also, we're expected to have all students participating, um, in MCAS, and you can see actually that we meet that standard, right? That we have 100% of students participating. Um, and, you know, we have students with a, a range of needs, and we are providing their services through special education. The majority of our students are receiving their instruction, um, in the general education setting, which was a strength in the report, that they're included, this is a very inclusive school community. Our students spend most of the day in, you know, regular classrooms in the least restrictive environment. I think it goes back to the point about professional development, um, having more time with our teachers, so that our teachers are increasingly equipped to meet the needs of all students. It's, it is particularly complex, it certainly doesn't boil down to, um, a, a simple fix or a simple answer.
It seems like such a high or, or a large fall.
In the rating, I agree, it's pretty, it, it was a tough, um, it was a, quite a, as you might imagine. And, you know, I, I think it's important too, to remember that, um, of many of these issues, the district was able to address before this rating even came out. And some of those issues don't necessarily come from within side of special education, right? These are, this is about how factors are impacting students with special education, not necessarily special education practices and procedures. So, it, it's not just one concentrated area, it's.
So, the state doesn't think that we're impacting them well enough?
That, that, according to that rating, that's correct.
But those issues have been addressed previously before this report.
Correct.
And interventions have been put in place, so like indicator 13, two out of 40 students, there were just technical or compliance errors.
Mm-hmm.
That were then fixed.
Mm-hmm.
Could you, respecting HIPAA and, and any of that, like, could you allude to what those technical errors were, like, just so we can.
Yeah, I can, like, sure, yep, yep, so for indicator 13, right, so the dataset was 40 students, um, and as you just said, there were technical slash compliance errors for two students. And as you just said, there were technical slash compliance errors for these students. One was related to, so in IP, so in special education, we write a document in IP, individual education program. What drives that plan, that program are annual measurable goals that are meant to be updated each year. And at a certain age, those goals are meant to be connected to the student's post-secondary vision. And so this was, that the error that was related to that, that there was a there was a technical error that one of those goals didn't get updated fully. It doesn't, right, we had the meeting, we still, you know, did right by the student, we still did many things right. But when it came to checking 10 or so boxes, there was one of those boxes that we couldn't check. And that's the reason why. So there's one. The second one is evidence that if appropriate, a representative of any participating agency was invited to the IMPT meeting. So some students work with additional outside agencies, especially as they're approaching leaving high school. So they might be getting services from the Department of Mental Health or Department of Developmental Services. They might be working with MRC to get job-related skills. And we had a student that was younger than expected to be working with an agency like that. We missed inviting that outside person in the, you know, the expected amount of time. It was a staff misunderstanding. We retrained the staff, we corrected that error. We made sure that that person's input was available for the team, that the student was not negatively impacted. It was very much a technical error.
And then there's also a problem resolution system, PRS, that anyone can submit concerns or complaints to.
That's correct.
And so there was five different.
There were different areas that came out of that, and those areas have all been corrected as well. And again, some of those areas are very external to special education, but that do impact all students, of course, including special education. And it so happened that there was a connection between those two areas and those, between those two groups in those areas.
And so I see the bullying policy needs to be reviewed again in 2024?
November of 2024, it needs to be updated again. Yes, please.
Yeah, I just missed that one. I'm curious, like, are there other policies that need to be like grasped and or like that need to be reviewed in a certain schedule?
I believe that there are, yes. I'm not necessarily prepared to speak to those at this point, but I do believe, yes, that there are.
The MAS C lets us know that when policies need to be updated.
Do they?
Yeah, that's how we know what our policies are. They, they, like, they just gave one in January 2023. City of Miami.
They have a whole data.
Like in terms of like which was our.
As far as they relate to this, I don't know.
Like every two years, like they, I mean, because they wouldn't know when we voted on this, November 22, so. I don't know, they usually let us know when something, when a policy needs to be updated. That's within the policy within their, in their.
Yeah, they send out bulletins all the time. As far as it relates to this, I'm not exactly sure what the answer here. But yeah, they send out updates.
We just, didn't we just update it last year? November of 22?
November of 22. Yeah, I know, yeah. That one.
So you missed it for 23? But is that two years?
Biannually.
Oh, it's biannually.
Biannually, yeah.
But we missed it for.
We had missed it, so it was.
For 22.
Right, it was done in 2018 and then done again in 2022, so.
So you missed it for 20?
For 20, and I mean, COVID, 2020, yeah. Can see how it might have happened.
I'm curious, is there, maybe we need to create a calendar for policies? Like one we need, like just for future committees, like this is, the policy needs to be reviewed by this point?
We have.
Do you have a calendar? And so your agendas are.
2020, I wasn't here, so I don't know what they were doing then, but yeah. There's also that aid we, we're on it yesterday.
Go on. Show the policy.
Does anyone have any more questions? Thank you.
I just have this wellness committee policy in.
Okay, yeah.
Actually, I think Laurie and I worked that yesterday.
Did anyone want to, did you want to speak to it or you just want questions?
I'm sure, I mean, I'm just happy to say that Lisa and I are always on the wellness committee with that committee as well. We've had a great opportunity to prepare them to take a course that basically taught us how to assess our current policy and how to write policy that would include all the necessary federal mandates. And so we put it together, we also had it reviewed by coaches that work for Birmingham State that are also associated with DESI, and they were all very happy with it. So yesterday, there was a question that I am looking into. I've gotten some answers back, and I'll follow, finish up on that before the thing.
Thank you. Did anyone have questions on the wellness policy?
Sally was nice enough to come into our policy subcommittee meeting yesterday, and we went over it. And I, Lisa, you weren't there, but I was so impressed by this whole document. It was really easy to really, to read, and it was actually enjoyable to read, like I was. But very professional and comprehensive, so nicely done.
Well, it was a really great update compared to what we had, but it was really what we learned from that, from the class. So, and there were a lot of tools from the government that made it easy for us to, you know, know what to add and everything. We put our own little, you know, flair on it. But yeah, I feel really happy about it.
Thank you for working on DESI. Didn't you also share with DESI?
Yes, yes, they had a couple of people on that, and Jason was on there.
Random question on the wellness policy, Lisa. I noticed walking in on the door, there's a, was it a Chipotle fundraiser going on? Is that what it was?
It was Saturday.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so there's a part in the wellness policy about any fundraisers involving food has to be certain types of food groups. So we have.
It's outside school hours.
It's outside school hours.
It was parent-teacher organization during the school day and up to 30 minutes after the day ends.
What was the sign up during the school day?
I don't know, it's on the front door.
Well, it's, it's a fundraiser for, and so this is opportunities that a lot of restaurants provide. A lot of local restaurants, so they partner with student groups. And a certain percentage of the meal goes back to the school. So if a family decides to go there for dinner, a certain percentage of that. So it's very common.
Yeah, the phrasing says parent-teacher association, so I assume that would be referring to like what the PTO did from Boyleston recently, send flyers home and provide frozen cookies.
Yeah, but the, so the wellness policy here is that the committee recognizes the value of fundraisers for school sanctioned student groups and clubs. So PTO, I believe, falls under school sanction?
Well, it's a, they're completely separate organizations.
Right, but they're fundraising on behalf of the schools, so it goes through the fundraising policy.
Page five, the phrase says, parent-teacher associations are asked to research new fundraising opportunities to replace programs promoting unhealthy foods. So would that really affect like nature's classroom or?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, like, are there existing things that the kids are doing for various fundraisers that this is going to impact? So that was one of the things we talked about at the policy meeting yesterday, was actually going through this. Because this does reference other topics that are covered in policies, like there's a harassment piece in here. We have harassment policies, so we just need to make sure that all the policies line up with what this is.
So wait, this policy is going to dictate what the PTO and other outside separate entities can.
I don't know, it says.
I'm confused on that.
That was, that was a concern I have as well.
I think it's just on school ground.
Right, this is during the school day and up to 30 minutes.
During the. So like, if the PTO wants to send home flyers and they're selling cookie dough, they can still do that.
We recognize.
But I think, I think that part needs to be, we talked about it needs to be specified, right?
PTA, I mean.
So this document needs to be specified with that language, because I think maybe one of the edits, it got cut out or something. But yeah.
I mean, the general idea is that we don't want to be promoting unhealthy foods through the schools.
No, I totally agree with you.
Yeah.
You sell pop-tarts every day for rollups.
Well, that's the question. I didn't have this question before I walked through the door and I saw it on the door, so that's why I had the question.
But you know, the booster sells something during a game, for instance, at night. This doesn't apply to it because it's earlier in the day. It's after the third.
Yeah.
But there are rules about signs being up.
Well, the marketing.
Yeah, the marketing.
Yeah, but the marketing is on like things like the ice cream case or something like, like those kinds of things.
And that's another policy. There's a separate corporate advertising and policy. I forget the name of it, but it covers what type of advertising can use schools. So we just need to make sure this lines up with that and any other policies out there.
Yeah, I mean, just, you know, having a kid in nature's classroom, like it's all food-based, basically, like, you know. A night at Papagino, those are, you know. Spaghetti dinner, which was after school hours, but.
Well, we verified that it's after school hours, right?
Yeah, so those, those, this was not. Dinners are after school hours. Those are Papagino, yeah, that's after Chipotle, that's all after school.
But this is saying that the PTO couldn't send home magazines.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, I agree, I know.
Where it would be the parents' decision to purchase that or not. I just, it's hard to raise funds, as we know, and so I 100% on board unhealthy food. But I think it's going to handcuff some efforts.
Don't they do a meat raffle too at a Sanato?
Not here. No, that's for the.
Boosters.
But in some sort of advertising.
Oh, that's, so that's after school hours.
Are these directives from DESI?
It's more federal from, yeah.
Just because I'm looking at like the last, on page five, the last bullet says, in-school publications and media, like advertisements in school publications, school radio stations, in-school television, computers, school-sponsored internet sites, and announcements on the public announcement system. So like, I'm thinking when we do like our weekly, end of the week roundup, if there's an advertisement for something, does that, does that fall underneath that? I think it's just, we just want clarity on it.
Yeah, so that language is.
That would be a school publication, right? So advertising like a Chipotle night or.
Wouldn't that follow the smart snacks?
I think Chipotle would.
It does.
Chipotle would, you're right, and I'd go to that, I would say, but like, like the, like I'm gonna give, one of the first things I thought of that I mentioned.
Oh, John just crammed a bunch of Krispy Kremes down us.
But the classroom, the Booster Club does like every fall, like bread breads and cookie dough and different things like that. So would they not be allowed to advertise their fundraiser like on the door and in the weekly roundup? Yeah.
I think they wouldn't be, I think.
So we've had problems with this.
And to be clear, this is not like you and Sally didn't come, this is a federal, this is, you guys are putting everything in alignment. That's what I wanted to get out there.
Yes, yes, that's exactly it. But it just encourages us to find better options.
With Chipotle.
Yeah.
Or my, I'm just, I'm curious about this because it, it says it's for the marketing of foods. So that's a marketing of a fundraiser. It isn't marketing a food item. So none of these, like the Chipotle or the.
I mean, that's, that's, that's a pretty gray area, Lisa. That's like the difference between. The school didn't send out a sexuality survey, they only encouraged the student to send it. I mean, that's a great.
It's like we're not advertising Chipotle or something like that.
Right, right. But you can purchase it at any one of those locations.
Right.
Right.
Did you guys like run this by the PTO's and all that before you are putting in front of us? Or did you have the PTO's or BEF or the groups that actually do the fundraising? Are they aware of this?
They may not be yet.
We haven't put it into, into place yet.
But it's a federal directive. They just, they know what I mean.
I, I agree, I agree, and I'm, trust me, I don't, I don't like the cookie dough fundraisers. I don't, I don't buy that stuff.
We've talked about it, a couple of us in the PTO group are aware of it.
For Tohoto, I think that you guys, if this committee would be able to at least loop in.
Well, that's the thing, after this is all approved, then we would need to communicate.
Okay, after it's approved.
Yeah, when it's all in place, then, you know, we'll do more communication.
I was just about to say, I have personally bought the cookie dough one, even though I love Chipotle. But I get it.
Our goal for this is to research all this, put the policy into place, and then moving forward, it's about communicating and monitoring the policy.
Okay. But it's, oof, but it's not school, it's parents. I mean, I don't know, like.
It's school sanctioned groups.
I'd like to reach out to one of those coaches. We were clear to fundraiser nature's classroom, so, I mean, then that severely limits how many fundraisers.
Yeah, I understand some of these things are, you know, and don't get me wrong, when we were talking about some of the fundraisers we have here already, we're, we're kind of sad, you know, oh, the kids won't be able to do this or that, we get it, you know. But these are the things that were, you know, federally landed. But I am also happy to reach out to those coaches and just give further clarification if you might be looking into it some more.
And well, I just, I'm curious of the phrasing, because it says, are asked to research new fundraising opportunities. So is this, I guess, how, how firm, I mean, this is like suggest? Or is it 100% if you don't mean smart snack, which is prohibited, totally familiar with?
Yeah, you can Google.
There's, there's.
All they're very smart snacks.
There's like for the policy.
Has to be such, yeah.
It's not, there's sections on here about the school meal programs. So is Whitson's proposal including all this?
I believe so, but I don't.
Standards, right? Yeah, I would just, you know, it's so, right, so that's just interesting, like we look at the snacks that we're able to sell through them and they, you know, so. You know, I don't know if we've had communication, it's just, it is interesting. And we also make revenue on that, right? So that's just, just like fair amount, right? So tell me the amount of rollups, you're right, there's pops. Boshes.
Pop-tarts are a smart snack?
That's what I'm curious, like, I don't, I don't know the answer.
I would.
Because this, this rule was already in place, that, I mean, this was already a federal rule that we were supposed to be following.
Yeah, I guess just in the application of out of school, not 30 minutes after school, from midnight to 30 minutes after school, doesn't really apply, I guess is my question.
No, it doesn't, it says it or does not.
Yeah, it's, it's sold during fundraiser, it's on, yeah, it's exempt.
But then does that apply, like then we can't send a flyer home with kids? That if your parents decide to make that decision.
I don't think sending, well, I guess it's the.
And that just does what I want to do.
They just promoting.
That's what I want to go back to the coaches with.
Okay, yeah.
Alright, so if you want to do that, that would be good, and then we'll, you'll bring that back to us next time. Thanks, Sally. Erin, anything else on that?
My only question was to have discussion on like 20 minutes of recess. For the whole day, was like, because I think it's currently 30 at the moment, I'm just really, like. I'm just curious what the conversation was and why it was only 20 minutes, because that seems really. It's a legal minimum. It's just a legal minimum.
Yeah, and then we just checked around and said, what are we actually doing? Yeah.
Or Carol might want.
No, I just had a clarifying question. It sounds like, so if, if and when the policy gets approved, then it goes into effect, and then, and the thing I get from those, like, advertising, which I'm approving for like PTO's and so on that involves food, it feels like we need to have a complete time to educate the different organizations.
I shouldn't, we won't be able to.
Are you comfortable first?
Yes.
It might be worth, before we actually vote on, this is only a first read, so it might be worth sending it to them.
That's what I think, yes.
Because we also have to go through this for actual policies that do exist now. Are they in line? Like to Jess's point about recess, like is this giving an avenue to cut recess out?
Yeah, like, ooh, I need more recess, not less.
When it's a simple change to 30 minutes.
It doesn't have to be, this isn't time-sensitive.
Right.
In terms that we don't have to vote on it in the next, this month or next month. Even if we look at it in June or we identify those different areas in the meantime, talk with the PTO's, we can still do that.
Sure, Whitson's as well, I don't know if their bid would change based on this, I don't know.
They've got to be in compliance with federal regulations.
Well, I know before they were here, when Michael Anarata was on this wellness committee, and at the time, he was wearing a bucket, so.
Sorry.
Nobody imagined that we are still.
Jess, you might want to email the recess question and the other one you asked to Sally so that she can maybe look into that or change it, I think maybe change it to 30 minutes.
Maybe the 20 minutes is a minimum, but maybe for our district, we can hold ourselves to a higher standard, that's.
Well, yeah, that's, that's, you have to have a conversation.
That would be great.
Alright, so that's good, and then we'll get an update next time.
Alright, so it will be now and next time, I will, you, let's be clear, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, and then I'll, if you want to send me questions, I'll look into that.
Thanks, Sally.
The recess time and then the, the PTA.
If this is approved, it doesn't mean that everybody's going to follow it exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
And part of the wellness committee.
Hold on, if it's approved, then yes, everybody is going to follow it. That's the.
Well, but part of our, the wellness committee's charter is to monitor compliance with it. And in, that assumes that, you know, that not everybody's going to be following everything exactly. And just to get feedback on that and to, yeah, and to educate people and to report back. And just to, to make this healthier food thing and healthier lifestyle thing more of part of the conversation, you know, more of a consideration.
Okay.
If we prove it, they gotta follow.
I think she's saying at first, it's going to, it's going to be learning curve and they're going to help.
Well, that's why you set it around now before we prove it.
But I think it's great that you'll be doing oversight as well, because you understand it. You guys have worked so well, you know, together, so you'll be able to disseminate and say, listen, that you may have done this before, but.
This is what we're encouraging for good reason.
Yeah, and that was beautiful 40 page document.
Yeah, and now it's beautiful, forty three document. Little concerns out of the whole document, so thank you for all that time. Yes. Thank you, so until the policy approves of cookie dough.
Oh, my.
Do you have any format?
I justify it by saying I'm helping the children, that's why, I like it.
You know, there's, uh. You know, there's one thing in here that's, uh, going to be an issue in the elementary schools. Food as a reward or punishment, I think when the state senator was here, we walked in on a popcorn party. So that's, that might need to be like that.
Well, Mick, was that for a reward?
My father, great.
It says, uh, schools.
Pop class smart.
It says schools will not use food or beverage as rewards for academic, classroom, or sports performance.
But is that what that party was for?
Uh, yeah, it was for a reading.
I think we should just all drink ourselves in gray and trudge through the.
Well, listen, they're gonna monitor this, and you're gonna fail.
No, why?
They're gonna monitor this, and you're gonna fail.
You're like.
Weight watchers is watching you.
I mean, it's a good idea, but the unintended consequences of this needs to be like that.
But there's not like failure, and it's not like a punitive thing, it's just more like monitoring and what are we doing?
Yeah. So, and, yeah, so we could probably.
Extra recess is okay, though, I saw that, so.
It's a smile.
Yes, yes.
Rewarding with extra recess.
Just not push-ups or running.
Actually, Jess, it works for all entry, but.
I'm, yeah.
Oh, I know.
For food work.
I don't know.
You do ice cream socials for honor roll anymore, is that a thing still?
It's with that.
Ice cream socials for making the honor roll, you do that anymore? They used to.
We do ice cream socials.
All of us gone.
Seriously, gray, gray and drab, like Johnson's.
I mean, we have, we do, right, they have like a celebration with the, um, ice cream and pizza for, um, the, I'm trying to think, integrated sports, right? I mean, there's a lot of.
Oh, yeah, for sports, it's a celebration, like, celebration.
Celebration, like a celebration. But it is thirty minutes after school, but they're during.
This is one during lunchtime, so everybody can participate.
Yeah, I don't know if you'll be able to do that anymore under this.
So this exact part, this has to be followed.
We sell ice cream every day.
It's supposed to be.
This is, this is coming.
Mostly every order of a pizza from here and then how it sounds.
Yeah, it's coming from the C D C, or the U S D A, yeah.
Still we do a celebration that.
No, that's a, it's a reward, that's a reward. Doesn't matter what the food is, it's a reward.
It is hench.
But if it's during lunch?
It's the reward.
If the kids got the food from the cafeteria and went to the room.
This is insane, where it's only part of eating, in schools.
It's policy, Julie, you got to follow.
I'm gonna keep the new.
They love it.
I'm, hey, I'm all for healthy food, this is.
But the new service, I guess, is, you know, just to, what I'm also saying is the new service, right, that's following these mandates, we still are selling ice cream every day. We still have, did you understand, there's still chips available, like, that is still somehow works in to their configuration, right?
For the meals.
So. Well, we have snacks too, additional, right, that's not their meal, right, additional pieces.
Yeah.
It's, it's like snacks, so once they're finished with their meal and they're cleaned up, they can buy a snack.
Luckily, otherwise, they're gonna make us crazy because lunches happen.
Well, we'll have to find out about that, we'll tell that back.
Yeah. Just there's.
I mean, I think it already must be allowed, so.
That's kind of what I think.
Just to understand that, like, why it's allowed.
Yeah. It's, I mean, they're, they're getting the, the backing of, you know, the government funding, right? For those.
Right.
There is. I just think it would need that standard.
This might be another, when Nancy comes back, this might be another question to ask her during this whole process with Whitsons, did they go over on this?
And, but wouldn't, is Rob, I mean, you would.
Yeah, Rob too, yeah.
You would know that too, so that was unfortunate.
Sure.
I do remember with the snack line, because I was working the snack line for a while while we were short-staffed, and during the changeover, I do remember the ordering became different, because we had to adhere to stricter guidelines. So while we still have ice cream, like, like, some of how we were ordering, right, it had to fit in this mold, so like, we have a lot of more baked chips, for example. Right, so we have like the gummies maybe went out, or the fruit rolls, there were some changes there that probably meet these guidelines. I do think that that shift has happened.
Yeah, so this is.
And the kids haven't been dramatically, like, you know, compromised, because I think they're still.
Hoping they're way better.
So what you're saying is this is based on federal guidelines, federal programs, federal laws, we don't necessarily need a policy to have been, to know that we're supposed to follow this.
Well, we need a wellness policy.
I mean, we need a wellness policy to educate people and, and make sure we're, we're doing it, but we don't need a policy to say, follow the law, that's what a law is, you gotta kind of follow it, right?
I don't know, they took a class on it.
Yeah, I mean, those things do exist.
Yeah, so you don't need this, if this policy didn't exist, we would still have to follow federal guidelines for serving food in schools. So, there's a lot of federal stuff that's out there that schools are supposed to follow, even if we don't have a policy for it. Alright.
So it brings it all together.
Yeah, it brings it to, it's a centralized document, it, it helps us make sure we're doing what we're supposed to. Okay, thank you. Whitsons is so confident they didn't bring a spread like last time.
Is there anything else?
Well, it's great.
Thank you for that long work.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Jess, would you like to give the update for the student success and challenges that we have?
Have you met? We have not met.
Okay.
So, I mean, the only thing would be to review the master plan in the future, get it.
Alright, the budget subcommittee is also not met, so there's been no updates since the budget was voted. Uh, Lori, do you want to give an update on the superintendent evaluation seminar?
Yep, so we, we haven't met, because we're gonna be meeting a lot come May, um, but in May, I think, the sixth, maybe, our meeting. And then the week, the week after that is when you will be getting your, um, your individual, redo a self-evaluation for the, um, school committee, and then shortly thereafter, we'll be doing the superintendent. So more information will be available at the next meeting, but just that they're coming up, we'll close our, close our mouths.
Color. Mike, did you have an update for the policy?
Yeah, uh, there's a handful of policies that we got from M A S C that are around the use of technology that are new policies. There's a handful that are also just changes to existing ones that we haven't sent to you yet, but the new ones, I think you do have them for a first read. Uh, Paul weighed in on them, uh, so his changes are in them. There are a couple of things that, you know, there's a placeholders, because they're a brand-new policy, they don't have all the B B R S D language in there, so that will get in there, uh, cross-surfaces to actual policies might need to be updated, but you have the handful of those. We did talk about the wellness policy with Sally, so we covered that already. Uh, the only other thing we updated was, uh, related to the surveys that were sent out a few months ago. M A S C does have a policy on that, so we looked at that, that is, uh, a policy based on a federal ruling or, or law, again. We had some changes that we discussed on that, not, not necessarily changes, but clarifications that we might want to do. We're gonna send those to Kim before they come to you, so that she has a chance to weigh in on it before you guys look at it. I mean, you can look at it if you want, but before we bring it forward to the committee.
Is that I L D?
Uh, I L D, yeah. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Carol, do you want to hear a report?
Yeah, sure. Couple of things on my report, I didn't have, um, information here about the student nurses, I just wanted to make you aware of this, I was excited. We have an ongoing relationship with Q C C, um, they asked if they could bring in student nurses to work with us, and we do have them coming as of April. They do a rotation, so there'll be extra pairs of hands, and, um, we asked all three nurses who wanted them, so they'll be working in Boylston and Tohonto, and we're excited, they're all horrid, sore, fingerprinted, um, but I think for the remainder of the year, it'll be great to have those, those students helping out in, in the, in the nurse's office, I'd love to keep them all here, I'd like, bring them. So anyway, I just wanted you to be aware of that. Uh, Berlin lease agreement, uh, as I, you had a chance to vote on the one lease agreement, the draft, um, Chris, Kristen Rubin and, um, Spencer Holland from Merrick O'Connell, their, their attorney, Heather White. We all got together in February to review the changes, after we went, we voted, they went to Berlin, they looked at, they had some changes. The lawyers was fascinating, fought it out on all about real estate issues, it was really interesting because it's just about the language, you know, that's used, so they cleaned it up, they worked together on it. Anyway, what you see in front of you is what we hope to be the final product. I think the big piece of this, um, that I'd like to point out, the lease agreement, that we, we came to agreement on, and I think that it's a good decision, um, and Kristen and I felt very comfortable with this. Basically, the town will follow what our policy is. So what, so that they don't have to keep redoing a lease every time, if we change policies, it's good for years. So, for example, the facilities use, whatever our policy says is what they will follow. What they will ensure anybody who wants to use the building follows, and what they will follow as well. Um, it's, for example, town meetings and so on, so that's on page two, um, deuce of the lease promise, and that's a really big change. I want us to have a chance to vote on it, the court, we're gonna be voting on it on April twenty second, and we're hoping that we finally have our lease in place to, to meet the regional districts, um, regional agreement. Um, and then I know that Boylston is actually awaiting this, so that they can use similar, which hopefully have lots of traffic.
So, anyone have any questions on the lease?
Julie, you, you're good with the use, part for basketball and whatnot?
Yeah, I, I read it, I, I read it as, um, that the town, that was, I forgot this to be done. That when it's town-sponsored events, then the leser should be responsible.
So if any town-sponsored events, basically, it says on page two, the lester should comply with all building use policies and.
So it's whatever policy we have in place.
Right, it's our policy.
It's the school community policy.
Yeah.
Because they don't really have the policies in place, they'd rather just follow what they, what we want them to do.
Well, didn't we, didn't we kind of go around that when we had the, um, COVID with the Board of Health, remember?
Yeah.
We lifted the mask mandate, and they still have the mask mandate in Berlin, and I remember the gentleman from the Board of Health said, no, we want the school to make the decisions for the school building.
I like, I like that, it gives us the, the, the control and the oversight that we need to have.
I agree.
Of what happens in the school, even though town owns the building, they're still giving us a lot of latitude.
That makes sense to me.
I don't understand, yeah.
Because of policy, now that you have to pay for gin.
No, I thought they changed.
Well, we was making way to that. But.
For this year, right?
Yeah.
And I thought that policy was, they were gonna look at.
So you have to.
So that's something. I mean, you, I think that's, I think.
I think it's. You guys discussed that policy, I can't remember, yeah.
Uh, yeah, we have, we, we've sorted it out for now, and we were waiting for the lease to come around.
Yeah, so then you guys can take a pass at that.
So they're saying, decide what you want in policy, and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's good, because it's ever-changing, and it, and then it's on the school, on his shoulders, the janitor, the one. So they'll have to look at that policy after we print this lease.
So then, would, that, there's a vote on that tonight, just.
The lease, yeah.
On the lease.
Yeah, well, vote right, we can vote right now, unless, yeah, that's why I want to see, does anyone have any other questions on it? Alright, could I have a motion to approve the Berlin lease as written?
So moved.
Laurie?
Second.
Jess, any more discussion? Can I all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and thanks to Kristen Rubin, um, and our three attorneys, Spencer Holland and Heather White, who really did a great job with this, and everybody worked really well together sorting this out, I'm happy it's finally done.
Any, any, we just had a vote. Were there any, any opposed? No, alright. No, I just want to finalize the vote. Alright, I was an I as well, so that motion passes, did you get that, Nicole? Alright, thank you.
And then just a question I wanted to put out to everybody in the preparation for the town meetings, we talked about this earlier in the meeting. Um, I didn't know if you want to do anything, or if we just, on April twenty third, we do have that meeting time available to talk in preparation of the town meeting, to, to sort things out, to, to know who's going where, what are the potential questions we're going to be asked, who's gonna speak, just basic prep things, or do you leave that to the budget subcommittee to meet on that? I just wanted to bring it forward to all of you, because I don't want to.
If there's anything that needs to be brought up, we probably should meet as the full committee, but, uh.
Okay.
So speaking of that, I was gonna, maybe this is the time to ask you. What, the situation, I guess I don't know the situation, the last meeting we had, the budget forum, we had, Mary brought new numbers to us that we weren't aware had changed. So when Nancy comes back from her leave, will she be able to give us an update before the town meeting of, have any numbers changed? Uh, what is the actual numbers that we need to make sure we're doing, what do we need to say? Maybe we should have a meeting with her to figure it out.
Well, that's, that's why I'm wondering if we should have a meeting to discuss all of that.
Also, do we need to reach out to Link to, to do another effort if our budget is different?
Carol and I are meeting with Link on Thursday.
Yeah.
Anyone that's from Berlin that wants to come, welcome. It's Thursday at seven, right, Carol?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I just want to throw, whatever you.
So why don't we, do you guys want to plan for, um.
So Nancy will be back from her leave by then, she can give us updated numbers from the state.
Alright, do you guys want to plan for a tentative Zoom meeting on April twenty third?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so we'll do that, we'll plan for a Zoom meeting. Alright, Carol, did you have anything else to say?
Yes.
Alright, we've got two votes, so the first one is the approval of the B E F Bingo fundraiser and service of alcoholic beverages. So I'll speak to that, and then I'm gonna abstain from voting on that. Um, who is speaking in the nature's classroom, is that you, Jess, or is that Cindy?
Oh, I can do that, of course.
Oh, whatever, I mean.
Just donations that we received.
Okay, alright, so you guys, alright, so why don't we do that one first, so let's, um, did anyone have any questions about the donations, that, that's the stuff you've received thus far, correct, Cindy?
Yes.
From your fundraisers received thus far, okay, so we have some donations we need to approve tonight, does anyone have any questions about those donations?
There'll be more coming. And, and, and eight, and May seventh is the last meeting before the trip.
Okay.
So I just, I just.
Alright, yeah, yeah, no, it'll be on the agenda for May seventh too, yeah, yeah, because I know Keith, um, from Keith's Music House, they're doing the fundraiser there, so we'll make sure we get that on that agenda.
It's both schools.
It's both schools, sorry. Alright, so could I have a motion to approve or to accept the donations to pay for the B B R S D nature's classroom field trip?
So moved.
Okay, Laurie? No, Julie, you're abstaining.
No.
I'm here. I can, I'll just.
Alright, you can abstain. I need a second, I want, alright, Lisa, alright, any discussion on those?
There's a lot of documentation on these donations, I like it.
Did you hear that? Good job, Beth.
It's about time.
Hold on, that was nice to hear that one.
Well, hey, you don't want to run into that situation where the parent wanted to take the.
That's great.